Tina, let me know whenever we're ready.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have to continue to handle our council meetings a bit differently for the protection of the public and our staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconferencing options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand feature to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will then be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone can please now join us in a silent prayer, followed by our flag salute.
Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Saturday, September 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday, September 14th at 6:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions.
Mayor Farmer, I would like to request a couple of changes to the agenda. I would like to pull or table item F4 for now. We are working on that item still, and we'll bring that back at another time. So again, I'm requesting to pull item F4. And I'm also requesting that we move the presentation under item H4 to the Presentations section under Section C. So again, moving item H4 to Section C.
Okay, so we're going to move the, just for the public, we're going to move the C Street Enhancement Project, which is under the Public Works, we're going to move that up in front of the Presentations.
Yes.
And just to clarify, is it the F4 or was it F8? Was it regarding the Summerfield or the Cottage Wood?
It was cottage, Greenwood cottages.
It was cottage, okay.
Yeah.
That's the right one then. Okay.
Okay.
So pulling item F, council, we're pulling F4 completely off, and we're moving H.
And I think you'll probably get a request for, to the removal or sort of the calling out of certain informational consent items when we get to that item.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You just wait until we get to that item, unless you want to do it now.
Well, you're asking to pull items, so.
Well, I'll.
I just wanted to pull five, F5 and F7 for just a brief explanation for the public.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just, I'll take that request right now then.
Okay.
We're going to pull F5 and F7 from the consent for discussion. All right. Anything else from council? All right. All right. Moving on to item C, Presentations. First item tonight is going to be the C Street Enhancement Presentation by Mike Selling from the Public Works Department.
So Mike is on his way in. I'd like to introduce our consultant who's working with Mike and Public Works on the project update. And Mike, can you introduce our consultants, please?
Apologies, council. I thought we were going to be number four on the presentations. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mike Selling, Public Works Director. With me tonight are Mr. Tim Hayes and Mr. Brian Wright, both of Somas, who is the city's consultant on this project. And I believe Mr. Chung Trin is here, and also John Griffin, our city public works director, or deputy public works director, sorry, is here also. So I'll start the presentation, and then I'm going to hand it off to Tim, I think it is, and then I'll probably wrap it up. So. Clicker.
Just flip the side up.
Flip the...
The side to...
Oh, apologies. There we go. All right. So for tonight's agenda, we'll refresh everyone on the project status, and then we'll go through the anticipated construction staging. I want to go over the status on the entrance sign. That's an important element that we wanted to give you an update on. And then we'll go over the estimate and the project budget, and wrap up with the next steps in the project and where we go from here as far as the project schedule. So as a quick refresher for everyone, hopefully, we had some outreach meetings last year in the summer and the fall, and then we were last in front of the council in December, where we had two locations that the council gave us direction on, and we'll cover those changes and how they've been reflected tonight. We've also completed the state side of the environmental, the SEQA, and we're close on the federal side, the NEPA. And then we're nearing completion on the final plans. As you can see on the slide, we're about 85%, so we should be wrapping that up here in the coming couple of months. And then as we complete this step, this design process step, we're kind of the home stretch, if you will, in this step. But as we complete this, we'll need to consider how the construction will occur. And as part of the continuing outreach, we wanted to share how, at least we think, at least one way that that can, that construction can be what we call staged. And so that's what Tim will cover in this presentation. And then, so really what that staging kind of comes down to is it's a balancing act in between essentially keeping access for the fronting businesses and yet giving the contractor the ability to work efficiently, productively, and thereby, you know, keep costs down, too. So striping that, striking that balance keeps those costs down. It keeps the project moving at a better pace, and it minimizes the amount of disruptions that occur in construction. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, and he'll take you through that staging, and then I'll be back to finish up the presentation.
All right. Again, good evening, council, mayor. Just for my benefit, too, as I walk through the presentation here, do you have screens? Are you able to see it in front of you as well? Okay. Because I think you could see it at that scale, but just so I'm aware. So I think, as Mike just said appropriately, it's really a balancing act. So great progress in the design. Of course, it was a year ago. We were out there doing our field walk, got some great input from all the stakeholders. And so now we've got into the nuts and bolts, completed up to 85% design. So now we're thinking ahead, okay, how are we going to go about constructing the project and balancing it as far as, you know, getting the project complete and built as quickly as possible, but also minimizing the impacts for all the property owners, both on the north and the south side. And it's really, for us, a two-staged approach. Now, for this two-stage approach, we first broke it up into three segments. So from right to left, you have from Civic to Maple, then Maple to Lincoln, and then Lincoln to Sixth Street. And the methodology and our approach is very much the same for all, but we broke it up into each of those three segments. So first, what you see right now is a slide showing the segment from Maple to Civic. And in the upper left-hand corner, you see an aerial view, kind of an overhead shot. And what's represented in blue are the driveways, are all the access points. And then behind that, what you see in green is the pathway, the access to each of those different driveways. So then if you go to the lower-left part, the color scheme or shaded filled plan view of the segment from Maple to Civic, you see the red on the top. And what that does, that represents the area of construction. So in our approach for Stage One, from Maple to Civic, we would propose to build the north side of C Street first. And by doing that, at the same time, the existing travel, two lanes of traffic in each direction, will be provided on the south side, which you see kind of in the, this will call it greenish or yellow. And so the intent here and the approach is that the contractor, while he's constructing the improvements on the north side, the travelways or eastbound and westbound lane would be accommodated on the south side. Now, what I do want to mention here is the upper right-hand corner, probably a little difficult to see the designed sections, cross-sections, but what we're trying to emphasize there is really the depth of excavation. So when you look at that red area in the hatch pattern there, we're talking about two, two and a half feet, the depth of excavation. So it does create a limitation in terms of the driveways along the north side. So with our approach here, we're considering, okay, what is the alternate access? How can persons get to Save Mart, Denny's, Little Caesars? Now, the next stage is Stage Two, and again, this is the Maple to Civic segment. And what you'll see basically is we proposed just to flip the operations where for Stage Two, from Maple to Civic, the contractor, the improvements would be constructed along the south side, as you see in the red fill area. And then at this point, the traffic would be shifted over, and they, both east and westbound lanes of traffic would be on the newly constructed pavement for this particular stage. Now, just to give you a rough idea, timeline, for the first Stage One, we're looking approximately three weeks. And then for Stage Two, that would be another three weeks. So this is Stage One, Stage Two. And just to finish out our approach, the methodology for Civic to, excuse me, Maple to Civic, is you have Stage 3A and 3B. And what these are is very quick, but it's the topical improvements. So it's when the contractor's going to go out there, and he's going to build both the raised median and Stage 3A, and then 3B would be the bike buffers on the outside, those separators that you've seen in previous, in fact, I think it was in the December council meeting. So that is the approach for the first segment, or from, again, right to left, from Civic to Maple. And I want to go through and spend a few more times going through the next slides, but it's a very similar methodology in terms of building one side of the road, what traffic is on the existing, then switch, shift traffic over while you build, and the contractor completes the remaining portion.
Tim, is it okay if I...
You bet. Yes, Mayor.
Just to be clear, so as we're working on, say, the north side, the first stage, and that's blocked, so those accesses to, say, like, Save Mart, Denny's, the Little Caesars parking lot, will they still, will those access points be completely blocked during those three weeks?
Yeah, I should, I should have clarified. Yeah, and there is kind of red hatch marks through the driveways, whether or not you could see those or not. But, yeah, Mayor, I should have clarified. Those are going to be blocked for the most part during the three weeks. However, as you're familiar, you know, you're familiar with the area, access is accommodated on the, on the north side from A Street. And the contractor also will not be blocking, you know, the, all the driveways at the same time.
Okay, so just to be clear, I want to understand this. So in the first phase, where we block from Civic Drive to Maple, which is, for those of you that are out there, basically from City Hall intersection out here where Carl's Jr. is, down to, across from Little Caesars, that's Maple Street, right by the Farmer's Insurance Office, so you're saying that the Denny's, Save Mart Plaza, the Rite Aid, basically that entire plaza will have to be accessed from the driveway across from Galt High School in the back way?
Ideally, that would be the proposed approach with this particular scenario. Now, an alternate to that would be for, to do one side versus the other, where the driveways, the two driveways closest to Civic would be blocked, while the contractor's working on that side, and then, you know, flip-flops. But if I could, Mayor, go to the end
Yeah.
of the presentation. I just want to, this kind of gives, sorry for going through this too fast here. Uh, does this, hang on, it takes a while. Sorry about this. Okay, there you go. All right. So you're able to see this aerial in the image here, in terms of the alternate access and everything? Okay, so that, and, Mayor, does that kind of answer your question in terms of where the access would be provided during that time?
You don't have a pointer. I can't really tell what I'm looking at there.
Here. Or do you have, okay.
Like whereabouts? I'm just, no, you.
Oh, okay, that's all right.
You, show me. Show me the access, the rear access point.
Can you see that now? Okay, so you see the access here. So this is the segment from Civic to Maple. You're accessing, okay, for the Denny's, for the Save Mart during that period. How are they going to provide, how are they going to provide access?
Right there.
Could I bring up another point? Just, humans being humans, behind ACE hardware and the physical therapy, there's access from A Street, but it's one-way. And I'll just raise caution that people will see if they can get through more commonly than before.
I actually am really concerned. That's a lot of traffic to funnel through that back little entrance right there. I mean, I don't know how many cars visit that plaza, but I'm only just going to throw this out there, but if it would be possible to do something where you leave, like, where you block the Taco Bell, Carl's Jr. access, and then the next one down, which is the one we talked about, which is a highly used one, and leave, like, the Denny's one open, that would probably be a huge improvement. Maybe give the back one and that. I just think if you do all three, even if, even if it was for one week, I can only imagine, because I, there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of cars that use that a day to go in that plaza. That's a lot of, that's a lot of businesses in that plaza with only one in and out.
I think, yeah, I think we, as a design team, can look at alternate access, as you're suggesting, so that, work on two driveways and then, you know, switch and work on the other two driveways.
That's just me. I don't, I don't know. We all frequent the area. We're all from there. I don't know. I just, and then you have high school, so when you have, when school's in session, that whole area by Galt High School is really congested. So now you're, have that, plus you're going to interject all the traffic trying to go in and out around that back plaza there. I don't know.
No, and I definitely, Mayor, here, where you and council are coming from, keep in mind, there's other options. So we looked at other options, in fact, we did a project with Mike about five or six years ago, where we just completely closed the road down. Now, that would be problematic as far as access and the property owners and the businesses. But, but if we do make the adjustment you're talking about, that is definitely something we, as a design team, can look at, but the duration will probably extend, and potentially it could affect pricing from the contractors.
I don't, I mean, if it was just one, like, if it was, I know that there's going to be some, there's going to be some, some inconvenience to businesses, too. And we understand that. We've, we've talked to them. But blocking, like, you know, a one business access for a week or a few days or whatever, that's one thing. But to block an entire shopping plaza with probably, I don't know, 30 or 40 businesses in it, and block all the access points except for their rear, which is really just kind of a, I don't know, I...
Keep, keep in mind that the Civic signal will be in operation.
Oh, that one's going to be open.
Yeah. So that, that whole, that definitely will be...
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what?
That's not a problem. So they can go, they can go over to this driveway, yeah, during that period of construction. So.
Okay. My apologies. I misunderstood.
I should have clarified that earlier. So, I don't know, Mike, anything else to clarify on, on the mayor's comments or from council?
Yeah, no, I would just say staff greatly appreciates the, the input from the mayor and the council and, and the community, too. These are the kinds of things that are helpful. And I think the other thing about this, too, that we've seen, and Tim alluded to a project that we did down in Stockton at the Lincoln Center, if people are familiar with that, it's a major shopping center, down there where all the access was closed on, on one roadway. So there were a couple of small driveways where people got in and out. But, yeah, where there's a will, there's a way. But also, the other thing is, the contractors, a lot of times, too, once they win the award of the bid, they will bring to us creative solutions, too. So, and I can tell you, they're, they're much more creative than us engineers. So, so I would expect that they'll have some ideas, too, once, once we award the project.
Everything you're sharing with us tonight is just, is just, just a proposal of what we think we're going to do.
Correct, yeah.
The bid gets awarded, then we'll actually get down to brass tacks on what's going to happen.
Yeah. In order to bid the job, we have to present a workable way to construct the project. It's not the best way necessarily, but it is one workable way. And like I said, they're very creative at coming up with more efficient, you know, cost-saving, time-saving type of solutions, so.
Thank you. And my apologies. Continue on.
No, that's fine. Actually, one thing to clarify on Mike's point, too, is it is important for us, related to the driveways that you asked, that we include parameters in there for the contractor, because we have to make sure in terms of emergency access for certain driveways at certain times, maybe the events, the market, things like that, that we want the contractor to be cognizant of. All right. So then the next segment, going from right to left, is from Maple to Lincoln. In this particular case, you see on the right side, kind of that two-stage phased approach. Stage One, build the north side, what traffic's on the south side, the existing lanes. Then the lower right, when that's completed, and then shift traffic over to the newly constructed road, and then build, the contractor will build on the south side. And then the next stage would be some of the topical improvements, or raised median and the bike buffer. But to the mayor's point, I do want to talk about the area just to, in the inquiry you had earlier, along the south side of C Street, west of Maple. You know, do you have businesses? You have both the insurance, you have the barber shop, you have the hair salon. And so let me point to that area. So that will be a difficulty in terms of access, because in Stage Two, when we're building, in this scenario, we're building the south side, their access would be, you know, temporarily restricted. And so for the insurance company, a lot of them, at least in talking to them directly, they park, you know, on Maple, and they can get the access. And the hair salon, there's actually alternate access back here they're able to get to. The barber shop, that's a challenge, you know, because that will be, you know, a, you know, a difficulty for that business owner during that period of time. So that's something that we need to coordinate with, put parameters in there. And then, as Mike said, when the contractor comes, he has a creative solution to provide that access. You know, that's something we need to, you know, to be aware of, and then if the city approve or make alterations to that. Any particular questions on this segment?
Anybody jump in?
Yeah. Okay. All right. So then in the last segment, which probably the most straightforward, we believe, is from Lincoln over to Sixth Street, again, similar methodology, building on the north, what traffic's on the existing south lanes, one lane each direction. And you go to the next Stage Two, the shift traffic over to the newly constructed road, then build the improvements on the south side. Again, there's still driveways and access, driveways that we need to be cognizant of, but less, less impacts. So then the eastern segment, which was from Civic to...
Thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tim. So I want to touch on the, the entrance sign and give you all an update on that. This is an important element for the C Street corridor, and we want to make sure, you know, that we, we do this right. So at this point, we don't envision that the entrance sign will be part of the project. We envision that it'll probably be constructed separately. And there's a few reasons for that. And the first and foremost is, is we don't have a definitive location for it. There's been a few locations proposed. There's a couple shown up here as the gold stars, kind of in that aerial photo on the left side of the slide. The, the lower one, if you will, is, is on city property. The other one toward the top of the slide there is on the FNM Bank property. And if there were some other locations, I know there have been locations over on the north side that have been considered as possibilities. Again, those would also be on private property, which the city would need to work out some agreement with the property owner if we were to consider placing a sign on, on private agreement with the property owner if we were to consider placing a sign on, on private property. So that's, that's the one challenge is where's it going to be located? And then if it is on private property, to negotiate that agreement, those terms. The other thing is, is it would, let's see, I wanted to check my notes here. Yeah, there could be potential utility conflicts depending on where it's at. So if there were some utility relocations needed, or just to kind of work around what utilities may be there, that's something that we would, you know, need to determine based on where the location is. And then the last thing on it is just to kind of firm up the details on what type of sign is envisioned. And there's a couple of examples up there. I think the, the upper one is from an aquatic center in the greater Sacramento area. It's a newer multi, you know, color, full color capability. So something like that. Or there's kind of a more low-tech version, I guess I'll say, in the, the lower picture there. Probably most folks have seen these in Elk Grove, but they're kind of, you know, a more traditional, like I said, low-tech style. So there's some, there's, you know, like with everything, there's pluses and minuses, and we as staff would invite, you know, any, any thoughts or feedback from the Council on that. But one thing I would say is regardless, if we can work out a location, we can certainly do what's called a change order, once the project is under construction, just to stub out, you know, conduit for electrical connection to that location and then, you know, because the sign, whatever we end up with, is going to have to be a special, you know, order, manufacturer kind of thing. So, and that would come later on, so. But again, we could, we can include the, the conduit connection in the contract once we nail down the location. So with regard to the project cost and funding, the engineer's estimate is currently at about $5 million. The city, we have a funding commitment of 3.7 million, and that's composed of about $2.5 million from the COG grant that we received back in, I think it was 2018. And the city's commitment on that grant is about $1.2 million, which would come from our Measure A funds. That's the half cent sales tax on transportation, for transportation in Sacramento County. So that does leave us a shortfall of about $1.3 million. And so that $5 million that I touched on, it was actually closer to $6 million. Staff and, and the consultant team have already been working on some ways to kind of whittle down the costs, as you can see on the cost-saving measures that we've noted up there. Part of that is due to reducing the pavement section. The original design was probably overdesigned for the traffic that we have here, so we were able to get some savings from, from the general roadway section. And then some additional savings by reducing the thickness of the pavement in the bike lanes and shoulder areas, because they just don't have the loading that you do with vehicles out in the center travel lanes, so. Some other things we're looking at is what we call bid alternatives. These are things like the street lighting, for example. The poles that, that we would have, that we envisioned, like we have on Fourth Street, decorative poles, really nice looking, obviously a premium cost to that. So we could look at something like a more standard type pole, you know, no frills, if you will, save some money there. Another way I noted up there is we already expanded the streetlight spacing to the extent that we could, so that saved us a few streetlights, so there's some cost savings there. And then the staging, as Tim kind of went through, depending on how this thing is staged and the efficiency, you know, with which the contractor can work, there could be some cost savings there. So things like that can be in, in those bid alternatives. And then obviously additional funding, where can we find some more money? SACOG, we actually just had a conversation with our SACOG reps last week, and they noted when we asked them about this possibility that they are definitely getting requests from other agencies for additional funds too. I mean, I think we're all aware of, you know, what inflation's done, and so they're, they're aware of that too. And so they're looking into options from their side as well. And then the other thing is we've, we've looked into is for some elements of the project, we can use the city traffic impact fees. These are fees that are collected from new development. And so, but they do have some limitations on them, and that's why we can only use them for certain elements to help bridge that gap. But that's just another option for us that we're looking at. The question is how much, so. So as far as next steps in the schedule, we would hope to complete final design by the end of this calendar year and then put the project out to bid. I would expect that we can, we would be back at Council probably sometime in the March timeframe to award the project. And then looking at construction starting probably, oh, I'd say maybe late April, early May, and probably running into the fall, probably about this time next year, maybe September, October next year to have construction all complete. And maybe looking at a ribbon cutting then, so. So that's kind of the next steps, and then I think that completes our presentation, and staff, myself, the consultants, the whole team's available for any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Mike at this time on this?
Just Mr. Mayor. Mike Selling, my first thing is, the total cost on that project, you think of $5 million or $6 million?
I think we're pretty close to $5. I'm going to look to the team here.
Yeah, we're just over, we're just over $5 million to the latest construction cost.
So we're going to get some kind of grant. We also can get from Sacramento Transportation. And you mentioned we have to come up with $1.3 million from the city?
That's the gap that we're looking at right now, yeah.
And, and that is $1.3 million, we think if we might be, we can use the traffic's impact fees, what with the new project that coming?
Correct. We can use a portion of that, but again, it's probably going to be a fraction of that amount. It won't be anywhere close to that amount, so, yeah.
And we also taking some measure to cut down that cost, like an alternative, maybe bringing back. Otherwise, we need a $1.3 million in order to complete that project.
Correct.
Okay. Then my next is just a clarification. Last time, remember, we said, go outreach to the public, and there was a two business they have a concern, I think F and M Bank and Dry Creek Liquor.
Correct.
And you might be pointed out how their in and out access in a new plan.
Keep going?
Yeah, keep going, next four slides.
Okay, so this is Dry Creek Liquor there, and what were you?
The next two.
Okay, what were you using for the pointer? Is it the red?
The right arrow, I think. Oh, the pointer's right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm going to put on my glasses, I can't see that far. Okay, so, okay, yeah, right, next one. Right, well, I got to back up.
The back one, there you go.
There we go. So, I pushed the wrong button. So here's the Dry Creek Liquor store, and last we were here, this is what we were looking at, was a median there, which would prevent this westbound left turn into their parking area. And that's what we were proposing at the time back in December, and the gentleman from, and we had previous conversations, but he was also here at the council meeting, and he expressed, you know, his strong concerns over that. So that has been revised. Is it, yeah?
Taken out.
Yeah, so it's taken out. So this is what it would look like. Essentially, you've got a two-way left turn lane in here in the middle now for any traffic to have refuge. That way you're through traffic and continue and, and make that left turn in. So, so that's been addressed and resolved, basically just taking the median out to allow for that term movement and access. And then on the Galt Plaza, the issue, this is the correction, I believe.
I believe F and M Bank, right?
Yeah, so this is what we were proposing last December, and what you can see here is we had, you know, essentially left ends to the Starbucks, F and M Bank, and then a left end for eastbound into Galt Plaza Save Mart. And the concern that was expressed at the council meeting back in December was to not restrict the crossing movements, basically to go from one to the other, or to restrict the left outs. So if you're at the Save Mart to be able to make a left turn and go eastbound, or if you're in the Starbucks, F and M Bank, to exit out, make a left turn and go westbound. So this is where it ended up. As you can see, we've got essentially another two-way left turn pocket here, and that allows for the cross movement and the left, left outs both ways as well. So those concerns have been mitigated.
Okay, thank you, Mike, and you and your staff accommodate the business they requested. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mike, sir.
Hey, Mike, the little orange square there, wasn't that?
Correct.
An icon that was representing a possible sign?
Correct, yeah.
Placement?
So I think, yeah, good point, Mayor. I think there's really three signs is what we talked about on this project. One was the electronic full message sign to convey activities in the community to, you know, the, the, the public. And, and then there was a kind of a welcome to Galt sign, which is kind of what we envisioned this being that you're pointing out. And then there was, and I don't have the, I don't think we have the slide, but there was a third sign for an old town Galt envisioned at the C and Seventh Street intersection, I believe, so in the median area there.
Well, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the, all the engagement that was done. I think a lot of the Council was in attendance at most of those meetings, and there was a lot of input. You guys had the big papers laid out, everybody was able to talk about, you know, people's habits of how they drive, and you guys made a lot of changes. And then I know there was, you know, we pretty much engaged, we pretty much engaged every business on C Street that was going to be impacted, like personally walked in their business and said, here's the floor, here's the map, what do you think? What's your problem? Because we didn't want any issues where somebody said, I didn't know about this, or I didn't, if I would have had input, I would have changed, you know, X, Y, Z. So I was very confident coming away after that and approving that we did, you know, the outreach. So I appreciate all that. I just want to reiterate again, and I know we're not near construction, so I'll repeat this again then, but there's very few of us that were here when the Lincoln Way project disaster, what I call it, happened back in early 1990s. We had businesses that went out of business because of that project. It was poorly handled, poorly, poorly executed, and we have basically, the five of us up here have assured our business owners that we would minimize impacts to a minimum. There is going to be some impacts, there's going to be some inconveniences, there's no getting around that, but that we will be, communication will be 100%, letting them know what's going to be what, when, and all that, so we can make this go smoothly. So I just want to reiterate that we're going to do that.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Yeah, we will continue the outreach, you know, through the construction phase, working with the contractor, and as Tim alluded to, another project, you know, giving updates, whether it's on the website or through email blasts, those kinds of things, to kind of let them know what's going on and what's coming, you know, in, in the week or two ahead kind of thing, so.
That's all I have. Does anybody have any additional comments for Mike at this point? Well, we look forward to things moving forward, you know? So thank you for the presentation. Thank you, sir.
Mike, I just have a couple of comments real quick. I know SACOG has a couple of different programs getting ready to kick off for grant programs, and I appreciate your working with the staff over there. I, I would just say that as we're moving forward on this, I would be cautious to cut the budget so much that it doesn't do the project justice.
Right.
So strike, try to strike that balance of.
Absolutely.
What is going to look good, and, because that's really the intent of this, right, is to provide some additional, if you will, some ability for people to look at this area and say, man, that's a nice area. And in turn, what happens is people return and go to businesses and really, or to help some of those businesses along. So if that's the goal, I would just, just actually, you know, be real cautious about how, how that's approached, so. And one, and 1.3 million is really, I mean, it's a lot of money, but in, you know, the revolving match programs that are out there, and that could be pretty, that could be accessed pretty easily, I think, so.
No, actually, yeah, great comment, Council member, and would just want to assure the Council, we definitely understand, I mean, C Street's a gateway, if not the gateway to Galt, and we recognize the importance of, you know, getting it right, that it's an aesthetically pleasing corridor, because it does, you know, represent the city. It, it also, you know, you know, gives people that good feeling, if you will, to come back and, and, you know, to, and, you know, do business there, you know, and, and purchase, you know, goods and services from the merchants, so. We definitely recognize it, so I appreciate that comment.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we do, we do have public comment on.
Okay. Other comment on this particular item? Mr. Belley?
No.
Oh.
On this one, it is Ken Lee.
Ken Lee, Mr. Lee, come up to the podium.
Mr. Counsel, I have to do a six-week to the Palmonad.
Just go ahead and come up here to the microphone and, thank you.
Mine has to do with Sixth Street to the Palmonad on C Street. Basically, they have short parking spaces, like on Fourth and C and Fifth and C, and it seems the longest truck seems to park in that 12 to 14-foot space. It impedes traffic and makes the traffic go out of its lane into the impeding, into the opposing lane. And basically, I wanted to know if you could stripe a broken line for motorcycles only. And, because, and then the other thing, it blocks the, the visual sight of the pedestrians trying to cross Fourth and C. And then walking C Street, I finally noticed there's a 20 mile per hour sign there between Sixth and Fifth. Never seen it there all the time that I've been driving.
Been there for years.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And just so you know, we are aware of that with the, there's a lot of people that park big work trucks in those short spots, and it's a problem. So I think we just need to bring that to attention of our PDs so that they can, you know, talk to these people or, you know, so they don't, but thank you for bringing that up. That, that is a concern. I've seen it happen. Thank you. Any additional public comment on this?
Ellis Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
My thing is regarding the sign that they were speaking of, the entrance large sign. Considering what we're going through now, my suggestion would be non-electric. Reason being, we're under a caution right now, why would we want a sign that's going to add more problem? I don't see where it's so fancy that the electricity is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, ma'am. Any additional comments?
Not on this item.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll move on to our second presentation of the night, which is going to be the annual report from the Commission on Aging.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the Council. I am Bob Belay, I'm the Chair of the Commission on Aging, and I am presenting to you tonight the annual report for your consideration. I would like to give you a little background in terms of what has transpired since the beginning of the fiscal year, July 2021 through June of 2022. From July 2021 until the end of March 2022, the social activity of our seniors continued to be very limited, and for many, nonexistent, due to the COVID pandemic, as we all know. This had a deliratory, no, had a negative effect, I can't think of the name, has had a negative effect in so many ways. I'll give you a few examples. In-person gatherings were not permitted. Seniors were told to shelter in place. Meals on Wheels shut down its café at the Shebola Center, and there was no indoor dining, and there still isn't. And we don't know when it's going to start up again, yet. The Senior Club shut down its activities and continues to be in a state of hiatus, if I pronounced that correctly. Or is not active. The Galt Senior Resource Center went virtual, taking care of inquiries by phone only. The COA become, became aware that some seniors were unable to take, to avail themselves of COVID immunizations, either because they were afraid to venture out, or maybe they just. Either because they were afraid to venture out, or maybe they just couldn't physically because they were incapacitated. So the COA brought this to the attention of a few, the council, and suggested a mobile immunization unit be established to immunize these seniors in need at their homes. And you guys stepped up to the plate through Rich Lozano. I want to, I want to point him out specifically and his activity to get this going. And thanks to the other people in the city's leadership, like Director Solis and others, and the Kasundas Services District Collaboration, the mobile immunization unit went into action. In addition, several of my fellow commissioners have assisted in providing information of available local food resources to the seniors. And two of them have assisted in the delivery of food items to seniors in need during COVID-19. Since April 2022, the pandemic requirement's starting to loosen a bit, and some activities for seniors resumed. I'll give you a few examples. The beginning, in the beginning of April 2022, the Galt Senior Resource Center opened its doors to the public, hoping to draw some foot traffic. Until July 2022, when due to lack of activity, we went back to doing virtual. The Shabola Center, under the direction of Parks and Rec, resumed classes and other scheduled activities beginning in April 2022. However, since neither Meals on Wheels nor the Senior Club resumed its indoor activities, there was nothing, there was nothing else going on, so seeing that there was no foot traffic coming in. So we decided, we, the, the, the Galt Resource Center went back to virtual until it's reopening that schedule for September 20, 12th. Next Tuesday. Or next Monday, sorry. Now, the Commission on Aging was invited to offer senior bingo to area seniors because of this inactivity, especially the senior club not operating. The Commission on Aging was approached through the city Parks and Rec and were invited to offer senior bingo to area seniors until the Galt Senior Club is able to resume its activities. The COA enthusiastically accepted this invitation and this challenge. And my fellow commissioners have, have been working diligently in the past several weeks, month, to make it possible for our seniors to once again engage in some fun social activities. One such example is the return to bingo with an ice cream social activity scheduled for Monday, September 12, 2022, at the Shabola Center from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Now, you have the commission's invitation to participate in that event. And I respectfully encourage you all to take advantage of this opportunity to meet with the, with some of the seniors, your constituents, and engage with them. The COA is collaborating with local merchants and organizations. My fellow commissioners and I have been looking for support from the community, from the business community. And I have to tell you, it's been actually very, becoming very successful. We're, we're getting the support that we need, and we always continue, of course, to engage in that activity in a very respectful and a very humble way. So the COA also plans to offer some fun and educational social activities for seniors going forward. For example, we're having the ice cream social on the 12th. Maybe the following month we'll have something like maybe finger food. And then, and then in between, and, and some other food activity. But in between, we will also have educational, we're planning educational activities for our seniors. For example, we will be inviting the police department and the fire department to speak to the seniors about things that concern them and that are related to the police department. So a special thanks from myself and my fellow commissioners go to the city council for approving our budget recently, so that we can continue to provide activities to our seniors. Now, here are other senior-oriented activities the commission has been and continues to be involved in. Again, we did the, we did the resource guide for seniors, and you guys, I gave you all a copy, beginning of the year sometime. And so we've had now distributed 395 resource guides that were purchased that have been distributed to date to our seniors. The other item is the Galt Senior Resource Center. We can, we currently have 10 volunteers to operate the Galt Senior Resource Center when it opens up again in September, I mean, September 12th. The GSRC reopens on Monday, September 12th, as I indicated. Now, last year, when I came before you, I indicated to you that we would participate in collaboration with the, with the Market Activities Office in health fairs, in a health fair, and our participation would concentrate on what's applicable to seniors in that regard. And hopefully, we were hoping that we would be able to do it during the time when seniors usually renew their, their contracts or their, you know, their healthcare systems so that they have information, they have new information to base their decisions on. However, thanks to COVID-19, that was canceled. I can use everything, every excuse I can possibly imagine and blame it on COVID-19. And I'm going to take advantage of that. Okay, so the commission stands ready to do its part in any future health fair endeavor undertaken by the Market Activities Office. And we've been in touch with them about that, and we will continue to be in touch about that, so that something can happen in that area. Now, another thing we do is we're letting seniors know we are always ready to listen to their concerns and to provide them with the tools and information so they can act to address those concerns. For example, we encourage seniors to attend our monthly meetings and to address their concerns and issues directly to the commission. The commissioners take the task of caring for the seniors in our community very seriously, and it comes from the heart. Because we ourselves are seniors, so we obviously have an interest in making sure that we have an open ear and an open mind. And we will continue to encourage all seniors and invite them to communicate with us their concerns and to provide them with the tools they need to contact the appropriate organizations. For example, we have several senior communities here in Galt that we have interacted with, either in an official capacity or as a private person, to listen to what their concerns are and to provide them with the information that they may need to act upon, to help them act, to present their own case to the agencies that are responsible for oversight. Now, the commission plans to submit to the city council a request to consider changes to our bylaws, so that we may be able to not just listen to their concerns, but also to advocate for them in a manner that the council may ultimately decide. We report to you. And you instruct us on the commission on what we need to do and what we can do within the parameters of the law. Okay? While I realize this process will take some time and being of, having little patience, I still urge your favorable consideration when it comes up to you for consideration. The Commission on Aging, in part through the Galt Senior Resource Center on its own, continues to strive to improve the quality of life for our seniors. We have, for example, successfully connected seniors in need of medical mobility apparatuses such as walkers, scooters, or food, or transportation to and from medical appointments. Now, I want to interject at this point that, and I want to thank Councilman Lozano because I have had the ability to meet with you, and you were gracious enough to listen to my concerns about the transportation issue. And I'm going to, thanks to his advocacy about that, I'm going to be there at the, what, what's that organization?
The Secog.
Yes.
Unmet Transportation.
Come to that meeting, and I appreciate your invitation.
Unmet Transportation. Real quick advertisement. Unmet Transportation Needs Assessment Meeting here, City Hall. I forgot the date, but I'll report back.
It thinks October 26th.
Yes, yep, there it is.
Hey, my mind still works. Okay. So anyway, and also to work with organizations that provide those kind of services. We also partnered and continue to partner with the Galt Police Department. I am very grateful to the new Chief of Police to have met with me so that we can collaborate together to advance the issues that are relative to our seniors. For example, the police department has a program where they collect data from seniors so that when they get lost, you know, as invariably can happen, I know I've, I've been lost, but not to that degree. Anyway, that will enable the police department to actually cut back the time it takes to find this person because they already have data in their, in their system that identifies them more easily. So we have the police department under TJ, when TJ was the service officer. We went to three, maybe four of those senior complexes we have in Galt. We have three more to go, so our commitment is to proceed to those three and get them involved in that, in that situation as well. Now, I also had the opportunity to meet their new CEO, our new CSO, Mr. Alex Gutierrez. And very nice gentleman. And he came before the commission in our August meeting. And he made, he ensured us that he would definitely collaborate with us so that we can continue in the, in the police department involvement as it regards our seniors. And also, I had the privilege of meeting the Kasundas Service District Chief, Philippe Rodriguez. Again, thanks, Mr. Lozano, or Councilman Lozano, for your part in getting us together. And I once, I publicly apologize for leaving you stranded for the first meeting, but whatever. We, we got over that, right, Mr. Lozano? Okay, so then I met with him, and we agreed to do what we can to collaborate in improving the safety of our seniors. Now, in addition, the commission continues to be very interested in the city's plans to expand the market project. And very much appreciate the city manager, unfortunately, he's not here right now, appreciates the city manager and his staff's action on keeping the commission up to date on its progress. The commission is committed to improving communications between the commission and the city council. The members of the commission have previously decided to keep their respective appointed, appointing council member informed about the actions of the commission. You, Mayor Farmer, come especially to mind, to me, because you are actually my, not necessarily my appointing officer, because that person's no longer on the dais, because you defeated him in the last election. Anyway, so I, you always have an open mind. Whenever I ask to speak to you, you give me your time, and I thoroughly appreciate that. And I also met on occasion with other council members like Vice Mayor Sandu and Rich Lozano. And I would like to now ask Councilman Papinou, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Very well.
Very good. And Councilman Vandenberg. I would like to make a, a promise to you guys that in the coming months, I will contact you individually and in the, in the spirit of collaboration so that I don't just come here once a year and tell you what's going on, but I keep you informed as time goes on. I think that's probably the best, the best way to go. Okay, so the, oh, yeah. And, and it's, the commission is very appreciative to the city council, to the city manager and his staff for their approval of our modest budget request. It's the seed money for all the activities the commission is, is and will be engaged in. Please be aware that the commission will come back to you with additional requests for modest funding from time to time. We also appreciate to our partners, we also appreciate our partners Cal Waste and SMUD, with whom we actually negotiated an MOU for ongoing support. And we appreciate their generous donations thus far, and this will help the commission accomplish, accomplish its mission. The Commission on Aging will continue to be represented at city councils, sponsored events. Last, and certainly not least, the commission wants to thank our liaison team, Director Solis and Ms. Lopez, and their very helpful staff, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney for their collective or individual guidance that they provide to keep the commission which on the proverbial, on the proverbial straight and narrow, which actually mostly applies to me. As we continue to strive to be there for our seniors. Now, keeping me on the straight and narrow, I will admit, can be a very daunting task. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Bellet, for your thorough report.
Thank you.
And thank you to Parks and Rec staff for always working with them on all the thing, everything they do. We appreciate that. All right, do we have any public comment on that?
No public comments.
All right. And, and, and also, thank you to the commissioners. I know a couple of them aren't here, but to those of you that are, we appreciate everything you're doing for our seniors. Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I just want to let the council know that I have a meeting on Thursday with the Meals on Wheels people, trying to get them back on track onto letting us having lunches back at the Shabola Center. I don't know that it'll do anything, but I've asked for an in-person meeting so we can try and fast-track that.
Okay.
Or at least get answers why we can't.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, well, next up, we have the Parks and Rec Commission Annual Report to City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up our chairperson, Ernie Kason.
Good evening, Mayor Farmer, esteemed City Council, and of course, Director Solis. This is basically just going to be the annual report from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 for Parks and Rec Commission. I want to call your attention to that five of the nine meetings that were scheduled were canceled due to lack of quorum. Of the meetings that we did have, and when I say we, I'm referencing all of the other commissioners as well. So there are four commissioners, three others beside myself, Kerry Graham, John McNamara, and Chris Smith. On July 14th, we did have a resignation by Commissioner Miller. And so because of that, that's why we lacked a quorum over the course of time. Of the meetings that we did have, on August 11th, we were able to go over the landscape maintenance service levels. We also discussed the Walker Park Master Plan update, as well as COVID-19 update. Then on November 10th, we were able to discuss youth basketball updates, bi-monthly meetings, some of the pruning season discussions that needed to take place regarding the foliage, COVID-19 update, and again, continuing our conversation regarding Walker Park. COVID-19 update, and again, continuing our conversation regarding Walker Park. December 8th, in-person meetings, you had a COVID-19 update. And then, on May 12th, we had an unofficial meeting because we all were in attendance, but then there was an emergency, and so once again, we lacked the quorum. That's basically it for us for the year. Due to the lack of the quorum, there's not a lot of additional content to add in. Did you have any questions?
Mr. Kaison, thank you for that. Not so much a question, but just kind of more of a statement. I, too, the first thing I caught was the fact that five of the nine were canceled. I just, you know, I want to state that like, you know, to me, these committees, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us up here, that these Commissions and Committees are not just a box to check. We feel like these are important, these are important entities in the city. I think some of them are very underutilized. When I was part of the Public Safety Committee, I was actually very disappointed that a lot of our meetings were canceled for lack of agenda items. And I used to think, well, how can we cancel Public Safety meetings? There's got to be something that people are concerned about with safety. How could there not be agenda items? So I would like to use this opportunity, just because there has been five meetings, to just reiterate for the people that are on these Commissions and Committees, and not just singling out the Parks and Rec, but these are, these are important appointments, and we expect the people that are appointed to these Commission and Committees to treat it very seriously. I know life gets in the way and people, things happen, and you can't make meetings, but to have that many meetings canceled is very disappointing. I feel that Parks and Rec is such an important topic in this town. I mean, is one of the most important quality of life issues personally for me, and I think that there's a plethora of things that could be discussed at these meetings, and I would like to see, moving forward this coming year, that that particular, your particular committee be very engaged and even generate its own agenda items, even if stuff's not brought to you by your, by staff, but you could, you know, reach out to your, reach out to the community, talk to your friends and neighbors, find out what concerns are in the community about Parks and Recreation, and create those agenda items. That, you guys are a filtering mechanism for the community to come to the council. I would like to see this, this particular committee be used at a higher level than it is so far in the past. So I would just, hopefully, you're inspired by that, and you guys could, you know, do that, and I would like to say, if anybody is part of any of these Commissions that just doesn't feel like they have the time, we would gladly accept a resignation and appoint someone who would be willing. I just, because I want to make sure we keep these things full. So, again, thank you for the report. I look forward to the year ahead and talking about some important things for Parks and Rec. So, just want to say that. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kaison?
Yeah, I just have a, I just want to personally thank you, Ernie. I've known Ernie for a little bit of time, and his passion for youth and sports and Parks and Recreation has came to the forefront when I first got on the council, and so I encouraged him to do this. I, too, as Mayor Farmer mentioned, feel as though many of our Commissions and Committees may be a little underutilized, but specifically, since you're up here, Parks and Recreation. And part of that is, I guess, I take some responsibility for that because part of the way this is supposed to work is council is supposed to send things to the Park and Rec Commission, and the Parks and Rec Commission are supposed to bring things to their, themselves. So, on that note, I would like to see, and I'll mention this at the end of the meeting, but maybe have the Parks and Rec Commission get more engaged in looking at our landscape and landscape median issues related to a public comment that we received on email suggesting that we look at drought-tolerant landscaping. So I'll bring that up at the end of our meeting for maybe to, an item to pass to the Park and Rec Commission. I don't know what that would look like at your meeting, but in terms of a topic, that might be something good to at least kick around and get some more input on. So thank you for your work on this the last four years, and I appreciate everything you do.
May I add additional comment?
Yes, please.
Going in reverse, as it pertains to the landscaping, those are topics that we have actually spoken about, and we have been able to bring some things to Mr. Solis's attention, and we were able to create some changes. Most notably, based on memory, was the pedestrian walkway over by, on Carillion, just because there was just an overabundance of foliage, and then there were times that, as a driver, you wouldn't be able to see a lot of the pedestrians, because not everyone takes the time to push the button. So that was something that was brought to our attention, we discussed it, and we're able to make some changes. And Mayor Farmer, I absolutely agree with you when it comes to the necessity for more attendance. As I noted, there's four out of five positions that are actually filled. If we're able to get that fifth vacancy actually filled, that would give us a higher propensity to ensure that meetings will not be canceled as a result of lack of quorum. So we place just as much emphasis on not just the content that's available, but also the fact that we have a full Commission, so that way we can ensure that we can have these meetings as scheduled.
That will be happening tonight.
Fantastic.
It's worth pointing out, we've gone a year with a vacancy, am I right?
Yes, sir.
All right, obviously, something fell apart there. So hopefully, we can get that taken care of and.
Mr. Kaison, thank you for your report, and thank you for your service.
Appreciate you.
All right, any public comment on that particular presentation?
No public comment.
All right. Moving on to our next presentation, the annual report from the Public Safety Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we're going to present the annual report for the Public Safety Committee. Here tonight to present that is the current Chair, Tim Reed, but I'll be around afterwards if you have any questions.
Good evening, Mayor, and other City Council members. I'm here to present the annual report for the Public Safety Committee from July 1st, 2021, till June 30th of 2022. Currently, we have five members, just so it's on your radar. Three out of those five members expire in the end of, the end of this year. We also have several under other non-voting members, which also consist of Vice Mayor Sandu, the Police Chief, Public Works, the Fire Chief, Park and Rec, and our Staff Liaison, Wendy Masters, from the Police Department. The Public Safety Committee holds meetings every other month, so we should have had one in July, September, November, January, March, and May. There were six meetings that were scheduled, there were four meetings that were held, two meetings were canceled, to the point that the mayor was making because of no agenda The purpose of this Public Safety Committee is to act as advisory committee to the City Council and to evaluate any public safety issues within the community brought to the community members' attentions by the City Council, city staff, or residents, and to make recommendations to the council. The Committee shall confine its business to the general public safety issues and shall not engage in discussion or address issues that relate to the internal operations of the city, including the Police Department. Items to be discussed by the Committee include such matters as traffic, pedestrian safety, special events, the emergency operations plan, and other public safety issues. The most common, the most common agenda item on our agendas is traffic safety, and followed up by PD enhancements, like the cameras that were just installed, and the wearable cameras that are used by the police officers. Other than that, that's pretty much the end of the annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So, just to reiterate again, thank you for bringing that up, because I was going to ask you, what, what were some of the, what were some of the more reoccurring topics? And you said one of them was traffic and?
So out of our four meetings that were held, three out of those four meetings, the top agenda item was traffic safety.
And are you, no, do you find that more, are we talking about people, concerns about, talking about a safe crosswalk, or are we talking about a traffic, like, we're talking about driving to?
It's all, it's all of the above. Since I became the Chair, I also instituted a very aggressive, well, not aggressive, aggressive's the wrong word, really, but trying to reach out to many people on Facebook, many of you have probably already seen it, and a majority of the responses back were stop signs, speeding, parking, things to do with traffic safety. Where did my note go? I think it was 20, 26, it was 18 out of the 26 responses that I had, had something to do with traffic safety.
Okay.
So yes, it is a very high priority of the Public Safety Committee, and we pretty much talk about it at every meeting.
Well, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and again, thank you for recognizing the need for, you know, I just feel like, unless it's an emergency, a public safety meeting get canceled, when you only meet every other month. I mean, I think there should be plenty of items on that agenda every month, or every other month, when you meet, so I would encourage you as the Chair to, to motivate your fellow Commissioners to get involved with agenda items. So, does anybody in the council have any questions for Mr. Reed before we go to public comment?
Just, I would like to thank you, Mr. Reed, your service. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. We appreciate the report. Do we have any public comment on that particular report?
No public comment.
All right. Okay, moving on to public comment, item D.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud. First public comment is Ken Lee.
I live at 400 D Street, where we have 100 seniors, and a majority of them were over 70 years old. And so, they give, they feed me data because they don't want to come to the meetings and say anything. So I collect the data. One involves the promenade, they need more benches, there's no benches at D and Fourth and E and Fourth, because the seniors, we walk the whole promenade. And so, they have, they have matching benches that can be removed from some of the, some of the points, because some of them have three benches, some of them have two. That's a cost-saving thing, if you don't want to buy new benches. And we use it for exercise, and we use it for our walkers. Some of them are asking if there's a, if there could be a community garden across from the senior building for exercise and getting our brains working. Also, they wonder if there's any community dog runs. If we had a community dog run on the Fourth Street Promenade, it would build traffic for the businesses, because people would bring their dogs there more often, and it caused reoccurring visits to the area, and it's the center of the city to make a draw from the people on the outskirts. They do need some landscape trimming, just like on Fourth and C Street. It's needed at Fifth and C, Sixth and C, because the visible sightline, the bushes are higher than the, those balls. And so, people, shorter as we get older, they don't see us as good, and basically, the people in the wheelchairs and walkers. So if they keep it at three feet, the same level as the ball, they can see us and we can see them. And, and, what else? Oh, there seems to be more noise of the long-distance commuters. I sit outside at 5:00 in the morning, and it's like a beehive. All the people driving from, from out of town going through are going every direction to see who can beat who. And so, a growing number of vehicles are blasting their music at the same time every day, so it has to be the same commuters at 5:00 in the morning. And basically, all of them don't stop at the stop sign, they just roll through. And so that's what, and so those are the same people, when they return trip, are doing the same thing. In the morning, there's no pedestrians, but they get in the habit of doing it in the morning, so they do it in the evening on the way back. And so, if they post signage in the street, more signage of the noise ordinance, and basically, the churches have been talking about the cow theme, they're wondering if they can have sheep out there to represent each of the churches. And so that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And I want to thank you for, for being the voice of the people at Galt Place. I do want to let you know that we had a productive meeting today with the city manager, Vice Mayor Sandu and I did, and one of the topics we brought up was some concerns about the crosswalks and the pedestrian safety on Fourth Street. I know a lot of you seniors that live at Galt Place traverse that street to go to the promenade, and we kind of touched briefly on some concerns about that. So, we look forward to maybe having a discussion out of soon. I just want to let you know, so you can pass that on to your, to your residents there, that we've been talking about that, so. Any?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee, do you ever, previously, the Parks and Rec Commission and the Commission on Safety both spoke, do you ever reach out to them for those, with those concerns? That might be a great way to help facilitate the problems you have.
You can reach out to Mr. Reed, who's sitting two seats behind you in the blue shirt, and he can give you the, the date of the next safety meeting. If you would like to attend that meeting, you can attend it and even speak, or bring an agenda item for it, if you like, maybe as a citizen, just get with him. Thank you, sir. All right, do you have any additional public comment?
Gilbert Valencia.
Good evening, councilmembers, fellow members of the public. My name is Gilbert Valencia, and I'm a local resident here. For the past couple meetings, I've been coming around talking about the Galt Active Transportation Audit. It's a community walk audit that I've been working on, and we're going to be hosting that walk audit this Saturday, September 10th, from 9:30 to 12:30. And our meeting place is going to be across from Velvet Grill, that parking lot, with the idea of doing the walk audit down F and E, down to Lincoln, then in up to Second, with the intention of getting some seniors in that walk audit to get their perspective. But the walk audit's meant for every member of the public, so it could be, all genders are included, all ages. I'm, I'm a new parent myself, so I'll be taking my two-year-old in his stroller to see what that's like, and the idea is to, just to document any barriers or deficiencies for anybody walking or in a mobility device, and what it would be like to get from Second, Second and F Street down to the marketplace. So trying to, trying to get their perspective and document that down with the idea of writing down some recommendations and passing those along to the city or the city department, so if there's ever any improvements done in the area, they can take those into account. So I just wanted to extend the invitation to any members of the public that would be interested in participating. It won't be too long, it should be a leisurely stroll, and it would be great to hear everybody's input on what walking that little small route would be like. And again, those recommendations, we'll write them down and present them to, to the city as well. I've been doing some outreach, we have a Facebook group, a Facebook event, but I've also been going to the businesses, and I have some flyers, if anybody would like to see some of those after the meeting's over, and if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out. So, once again, Gilbert Valencia, and thank you all for your time.
Yep, Mr. Valencia, the date again is the 10th, right?
Yeah, the date's going to be this Saturday, September 10th, from 9:30 to 12:30.
At the parking, at the parking lot across from Velvet Grill.
Yeah, and we think it's going to end a little early, and so, weather-dependent, we might shorten the route, depending on the weather, but we're crossing our fingers at it. It stays a lot lower than where we've been lately.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Any additional public comment?
No public comment.
All right, moving on to item E, reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended South Sacramento Conservation Agency on August 29th. That's where a very- That's a very short meeting. There is only one item on that. We approved the second annual report for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, and that's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vandenberg? I forget the order I got. Was it Papenau? It's Mr. Papenau.
It's usually me, but...
Yeah, that's right.
Any order is fine. August 25th, we had the Metro Air Quality District Board meeting and got a few stats based on grants. They have now awarded 687 grants for two income-eligible people for zero or low-emission vehicles. And also, the director made a presentation during this... During our meeting on a visit that the district staff actually had at the Galt Arno Cemetery District, and that seemed to have sparked a pretty good conversation to... Now, they're working with the rest of the cemetery districts in the region to try and find ways to assist them in converting over to what is going to be state-mandated zero-emission technology. And on the 1st of September, I attended the first Metro Cable Television Commission meeting, and we are now represented on that because Ranch Cordova went over 80,000 in population, so they have a permanent seat, and that leaves us, I guess, the odd man out, so now we have a permanent seat. And my first meeting was the resignation, retirement of the current Executive Director, Robert Davison, and he will be replaced effective October 3rd by the new Director, Candace Mobra. And I think I'm going to like this commission because one of the items when we were going over the budget that caught my eye was we had to lower our contribution for post-employment benefits because we are paid up on it. No deficit. And that's all I have.
Any council member? Councilman Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Lozano?
Yes. I attended the SECOG Transportation Committee meeting last Thursday, and there were a couple of items on there. We talked about a study that's going to happen regarding zero-emission medium and heavy-duty vehicles, which is kind of interesting, and they're going to look at it from the Bay Area all the way up through basically the Central Valley and north of us, up through Yuba City and those areas. So, they're looking at electric charging vehicles and what the impacts are going to be, as well as hydrogen refueling. And then, but specifically what they're going to be looking at in this study is how it... What infrastructure would be necessary for long-haul vehicles? So, when we were talking about heavy-duty and medium, we're talking about 18-wheeler-type vehicles that transport goods and services or goods through this area for different types of services. And so, more to come on that. It'll be kind of an interesting look at it all. And so, that's coming up here in the next probably three to five months. And I did want to confirm October 26th, at 1:00 is the... Our city's Unmet Transportation Needs Meeting. It'll go from 1:00 until whenever we're done, but the last two we've done has been about a half hour. This is a time for the community to come and talk about needs that our public transportation could provide to assist people with their transportation needs, so that we don't already have. And so, one of the ideas that we have been kicking around is how... Specifically, how seniors get from their place of residence to public transportation or to their appointments, medical appointments specifically, and, you know, what that gap is and what we can do in the region to shorten, narrow that gap. And so, look forward to that meeting. I know Mr. Balleys will be there, and we'll hopefully get some things accomplished so that SECOG can start looking at how to address some of these issues. And that is all I have to report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. For myself, on August 25th, we had a library commission meeting, which was very brief, handled a couple bits of business, and that was the end of that. On the 18th of August, I want to mention, kind of tying in with what Councilman Papenau was speaking about, met with some members of the Air Board at the Galt Cemetery and with the cemetery director, and we also had some candidates that are running for a local office for supervisor that attended as well. And it was a really good discussion about transitioning the cemeteries to electric mowing equipment and the cost of that and the logistics involved with that. It was very eye-opening, and it was actually troubling that the members of the Air Board said that they hadn't really put a lot of thought into about the cemeteries when they were considering those kinds of things. So, with that and what Councilman Lozano just mentioned, there seems to be a lot of talk about electric, a lot of talk about electricity, whether we're turning it off, not using it, converting to it, whatever. But... And then, actually, Councilman Lozano and I have a great meeting over with Cow Waste. We got to demo, again, another electric thing, their new electric garbage truck, which they are demoing for one of the companies. We got to ride and drive the truck over there, and so, was a... Want to thank them for the opportunity to come check out the new toy. So, there are kind of many companies, I guess, that are vying to build trucks for the garbage industry, and this was just one of them that was offering to let them demo it. So, anyhow, that's all I have to report for myself. So, moving on to item F is going to be our information consent calendar. Again, we have pulled item four off of the consent, and Councilman Vandenberg has pulled items F5 and F7 for separate discussion. So, with that, it is recommended that items 1 through 9, I'm sorry, items 1, 2, 3, 6, 8, and 9 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested. These items are, number one, the minutes of the 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. special meeting of August 4th and a regular meeting of August 16th, 2022. Item 2 is receiving file warrants for the period ending August 24th, 2022. Item 3 is the HDL Corin and Cone Agreement Extension. Actually, you know what? I had a question about that item. I just had one question about item F3. I would just like to ask that. Maybe I can just ask that real quick. Would it be possible for Mr.... I don't know if you can help me with this, Mr. Heinz. I apologize for not pulling that earlier. I just wanted to know what the difference between the renewal of that contract is compared to the old contract. Is there a cost difference, or is it just a renewal?
Director Boring is on his way in right now. He will respond to that.
I was so caught up in the other items being pulled, I forgot to ask the one I was concerned with myself. So, specifically, Matt, I'm just looking for, just briefly, is there a significant cost increase? Because this is a five-year contract for their services, and I have no question about what they provide, and we've been using them. We're just re-upping our contract, but the $13,500 per year with the CPI and all that, is that an increase over the last contract? I'm assuming it is.
There's CPI increase, and we added, I think it was $1,000 more to add a few more services because they weren't doing any of the properties covered under the redevelopment areas.
Okay.
We added those, but the only other increases were CPI.
Okay. And then, there was a line, there was some verbiage in it that says that they were allowing an increase of up to $175,000, and if it was more than that, they would come back to council approval. Can you clarify what that means? I didn't understand. It said something about allowing increases up to $175,000, $165,000, and then anything above that would come to council.
I think that's part of their contract language if we were to add any services, but if we were to add something, anything else, it would have to come back to council for approval because that would be beyond the threshold that we have authorization to do without council.
Okay. All right. I think that's the only questions I had. I apologize for not pulling that. Does anybody else have a question about the items? Okay. All right. So, again, the HDL Corin and Cone Agreement Extension, and then item F6, which is to set the public hearing date for the respective new water and wastewater rates. Item F8 is the Task Order Number Four with REY Engineers for the Improvement Plans Review Services for Summerfield and Twin Cities. And lastly, number nine is the Treasuries Report for the period ending July 2022. Do I have a motion to approve those items? Moved by Councilman Vandenberg, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papenau?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Items approved 5-0. Next, we'll go to item F5, pulled by Councilman Vandenberg.
I'd like to introduce Amy Mendez. She's our Economic Development Manager. She will go through both of these items.
Was there specific questions regarding the two items that I should cover?
I didn't want to belabor the point too much. I just wanted for the public consumption because Galt, you know, is well over $3,000 or $3,000, $3 million shortfall in revenue due to bleeding, and so I just thought it was important enough that you would touch on both of those topics, please, and discuss the importance of why we want to do this and how it can possibly affect Galt's financial future.
So, before you respond to that, I just wanted to clarify for the public that may be watching, the $3 million figure has to do with sales tax leakage, not necessarily budget shortfall. We did a survey some years ago and found out that the sales tax leakage out of Galt would... Basically, it would add another $3 million to our sales tax revenue. But when we use the term "sales tax leakage," that means our folks are buying goods and services from our neighboring cities or cities in the area or cities nationally or internationally. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll actually cover both of those items together because they are somewhat related, which is why we brought them together. So, the first item is a contract with Retail Coach, and we actually have an item as part of our strategic plan that was approved in January related to retail recruitment. So, as Lorenzo mentioned, we do have this significant sales tax leakage problem. We're a small community. Retail is not really, you know, robust here, and so, we are trying to attract retail in order to, you know, break this gap with the sales tax leakage. And so, part of our strategic plan relates to economic development, specifically to retail attraction, and during budget, we had a conversation about the fact that it's very time-consuming to do retail recruitment. And so, I have a lot of other duties that I'm working on outside of economic development, business recruitment for industrial uses, incentive programs, public outreach. We have ARPA funds for different programs that we're monitoring right now, and so, the idea was that we would bring on a consultant to help us with the retail attraction component. And the timing really has been ideal because we're seeing some movement on the Simmerhorn Commercial Project. So, it's a 45-acre site just east of 99, south of Simmerhorn, north of Bossow, and the developer we've been in talks with just recently, it looks like they may have an interested party to kind of start that project off and to kickstart it. And so, in those discussions, we really wanted to get ahead of the game with retail attraction, and so, we're bringing... Proposing to bring Retail Coach onboard. They're a firm that specializes in retail recruitment. And so, what they do is they will go out, talk to retailers about Galt. They will go to shopping center conventions to meet with specific retailers. So, we give them a list of retailers that we would like to see here in the community, and they start the outreach process. They propose, you know, one of the retail locations we have available for development and try to get some interest on the, you know, individual sites that we're proposing. And so, Simmerhorn being one of the major ones that we're really interested in. So, they will start that process for us in that outreach effort. We provide them all of the residential construction, projections on growth, what we're lacking, sales tax leakage information. They technically have most of that already, but in order for us to sort of start this process, we need to first have a contract with them and then have them begin that outreach. And what we're really trying to do, we've had interest from individual retailers here and there, and they say, hey, we'd go if XYZ type of retailers were there. And so, they start to make those connections for us and do the shopping center shows. They have the connections already with the retailers and with the commercial brokers. And so, that's what the Retail Coach contract is. They will be doing outreach for us for the Corillian Corners East Project, which is Corillian and Twin Cities on the east side of... Really, on the east side of Corillian, just east of Rite Aid, 12-acre commercial property that's vacant right now. There's been some interest there as well. And so, that property, the Fairfield Residential, is a smaller-scale neighborhood commercial. They'll be focusing on that and then on the Simmerhorn site as well. And so, one of the strategic plan items relates to us doing a retail survey with the community to find out what retailers people want. And so, that'll be something that we'll be starting within the next couple, probably the next few weeks, once we finalize this contract. Get the information from the community. We kind of know where people are shopping at and what we need in the community and what realistically we can bring in. And so, that's the Retail Coach contract, bringing them onboard to help us with that retail outreach. We'll have a platform to work with them, so we're able to log on to look at the platform to see who they're talking to, who's responding, what their interest is in Galt. If they're not interested at all, what would get them, you know, to that point where they would be interested? And so, we'll have a lot of communication with them. They are very transparent in their outreach efforts, and so, there's a lot of information that we can kind of push out back to the City Council on what that looks like and what kind of interest we're getting. The other contract is with Placer AI. And so, one of the struggles we have in Galt is that we are not a large city at less than 26,000 people right now. It's really difficult to get the interest level that we're looking for for some of those soft goods users.
Excuse me, Ms. Mendez. I just wanted everyone to know, we're moving on to item 7 under the consent. Okay.
Yes. So, Placer AI is the second contract that you had questions on. We're looking to appropriate ARPA funding for Placer AI. They are a, really a customer visitation and data analytics company. And one of the problems we have in Galt is that attracting some of the larger-scale retailers, if we want to bring in a junior-box retailer or even a big-box retailer, kind of showing that there is enough shoppers and retail interest in the community. And so, one of the things that we discovered in working with Placer AI, I actually ran into them at a shopping center convention, is that they are able to provide us with visitation data. So, A, they'll be able to tell us where people in Galt are shopping precisely, where people that live in the community, when they travel to Alt Grove or to Low Day where most of our leakage is happening, what they're buying there. So, what stores they're visiting, what shopping centers they're going to. That's really helpful for us to target retailers to say, we know that, you know, residents in Galt are shopping at XYZ, so we go talk to XYZ and let them know we have this data to really support that. The other thing that they provide is visitation data for people that are coming into the community. So, the Galt Market, for instance, we had a meeting with Placer AI a couple of months ago and just said, just one day for the market, just kind of curious what the visitation is. How many people are coming to the market on any given Tuesday or Wednesday? We trialed a date in January. This wasn't a vacation week. This wasn't anything out of the ordinary. School was in session. This was in 2022. People were back to school. We had 12,000 people that came to the market between a Tuesday and Wednesday. And so, that's really powerful data for us to be able to show to retailers to say, we, you know, we know that we have XYZ shoppers here. This is where people are shopping at, but at the same time, we have all these people coming into the community for the Galt Market on Tuesday and Wednesday, and these people shop at your stores as well. So, there's a lot of spillover information that we want to be able to provide in terms of the traffic that's coming into the community. And the data for the Galt Market shows where people are coming from. It's not a huge amount of people that go to the market from Galt. So, they're coming from South Stockton, they're coming from South Sacramento, they're coming from Alt Grove, but we can basically provide a radius of where people are coming from. Neighborhood, I mean, they really... I mean, they really go down into the neighborhood. So you know exactly where people live and where they're driving from to come here. And so while they're here, showing that those are the shoppers that would potentially, you know, take advantage of locations here in the community. So that is why we are trying to do these two contracts together. Galt being 25,000 people isn't a big number. A lot of retailers would kind of overlook us unless there's a reason for them to be here. Highway 99 is huge for us. I think that'll be a big draw. But outside of, we don't want the, just fast-food users, gas stations, to really locate there. And once you have a commercial zone, there's really not much we can do to say, no, that's not who we want. They locate there. We have, you know, two Taco Bells. If a third one wants to come in, there's nothing we can say to, you know, keep that from happening. What we can do is really target the retailers that we want here. So by doing a survey to the residents, finding out what kind of retail they want, what they're really interested in seeing here, realistically, we know we're not going to get Nordstrom. But hey, maybe there's a chance for us to target, you know, a Ross or a TJ Maxx or a Home Goods. So those are the things that we'll be looking for from the community. And then working with Retail Coach to do the outreach, having Placer AI to provide us with that visitation data that I think will be really important to get some of those retailers interested. So that's really the gist of it.
So a couple of questions, Amy. For the 45 acres, the notch, how much of that 45 is the, is the, is the commercial highway front there?
Forty-five acres.
Oh, just the commercials 45? So the whole notch is like...
Forty-five. The notch is the actual residential annexation to the east.
I was just curious, that whole area, but just the commercials 45?
And it's in the city limits. It is, I mean, there's some infrastructure work that needs to be done, but it's...
Well, you know, from 45, we already take 10 acre to the high density, so it's left only 35, right?
Correct. So we had, through the housing element, the city needed 10 acres for high-density residential as part of the housing element. So you're correct. They did rezone or in the process of finalizing that, I think, is the 25 or the 10 acres for the high-density residential.
So one question I had, but you actually answered it, was how are we going to tell them the kind of businesses we target? And you said you were going to do some, we're going to be doing outreach to the community, so I'd like to hear that so that the people of Galt will have the ability to input what they would like to, the types of businesses they would like to see. So just if I'm understanding this, just kind of recap on what you're saying. So the agreement that you're proposing tonight with, with, with Placer is to create data basically saying, look, you know, I know, you know, Mr. Home Depot, or I'm just using that as an example, not to freak anybody out. But, you know, I know you don't want to come to Galt because Galt's not 30,000 people. But what you don't understand is we have this data from this company that provide us that says, we feed from Harold, we feed from Thornton, we feed from Wilton, and these are all the rural. We have people come to the market on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and this is why you should be taking a second peek at Galt because we're not just a small, this is a unique opportunity. So that's what they're providing us. Then in turn, we take that information and give it to Coach, which then takes that data and goes to the companies and says, hey, we have this data and presents it. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a joint thing. And understanding, so the first part, the Retail Coach is being funded by the money we set aside from the strategic plan out of our regular budget. And the other, for the, for the Placer, that's being spent, being asked for out of the ARPA.
Correct.
Is that correct? So did I get that all right? Okay.
And also, the Placer AI data will be used for the Galt Market. So it's not just me that's able to use it, but Parks and Recreation will be able to use it to target who their customers are, where they're coming from, to really try to identify locations where they should be targeting their advertising, marketing outreach. The other thing is being able to pull information on our individual events. So I had them run numbers for the July Saturday Market. And they were able to provide us a breakdown of how many people came, how many people were there, what time they were there, how long they stayed.
What was that?
What time was the best? It was about three, I want to say 3,700 people at the July Saturday Market. Now, Armando pointed out that that was also the day of the parade, so that may have been, you know, part of it. But you can really see the spike in the times that they're there. So it was like 10:00, 11:00 a.m. was really when you saw the most traffic at the market. But you can draw really a polygon around anywhere and say, this is the date and the time that we want to, you know, track, and you tell us how many people were here. And this obviously doesn't include children. This is all tracked through cellphone use. That's how they get their data, is through applications that require location services to be turned on.
Well, I was, I actually was going to have questions about these two items before Mr. Vandenberg even pulled them because, again, I always want to make sure that we're, we're using money diligently for, you know, sometimes you look at consultants and when it comes to public works projects, it's like, well, that's really important. And other times where, you know, I'll have a citizen come to me and saying, we're going to spend $20,000 for someone to tell us what kind of businesses we need in Galt. I could tell them what kind of business we need in Galt, and I get that a lot. But this is far more than just that. I do think that if we have a $3.3 million sales tax leakage and we're willing to spend basically 1.5% of that number to try to capture some of that back. I mean, it would be very easy to capture and recoup that $45,000 if we were to even, you know, dip into that 3.3 at all. So I think it's, for what it costs, for the, for the, for the possible return on that investment, I think, and the fact that we did budget it out of the strategic plan, I, I think I don't have any problems supporting it tonight personally, for me. So. Any other council have any questions for Amy about this, or?
I don't have a question. I just have a real quick comment. Thank you for getting out in front of this. And, you know, I think for a long time, and in, and in many communities, we, you know, communities just kind of sit back and wait to see what happens. I'm of the mind that we aggressively go out and shape our own future, both with retail development and residential housing. And, you know, unfortunately, one of the byproducts of the state mandates, you know, that we always talk about, the housing element, one of the byproducts of that, I think, was that it got us in the mindset that we are going to have to be the entity that drives what happens with us. Because if we don't, there'll be more Taco Bells and gas stations, like you pointed out. So I'm, I'm in full support of what you're doing with this. And thank you for your work on this as well.
One last thing I wanted to mention, too, is that these, 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 these sites, these development sites you mentioned are infill sites, especially the notch, or the, you know, the one associated with the notch. So I think this very much fits in line with, you know, this council's preference to, you know, to focus on infill development, which we've been doing for, at least we've been doing it since we got on council. And since Mr. Vandenberg or Papino came on, we've continued that process. So I think this squarely is focused on developing that infill. So, and also for me, you know, it's this quality, not quantity. I'm, I would rather see our efforts be focused on more things for the people of Galt to do than necessarily bringing a lot more people here. So this, again, makes me happy because that kind of fits more to my, my personal, my, my personal goals. So thank you for clarifying all that for us. I think it was very helpful for the public and for us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make one, just one final point, and correct me if I'm wrong at any time. But basically, the people that are active on the property and the two items are going to help support each other, correct? And although we always want input from the citizens, these are private owners, private businesses, and we can't force anybody. So it's, the best we can do is to encourage better or the type of businesses we would like to see. Beyond that, it's just capitalism, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
There's only so much we can do to try to incentivize or steer or, you know, build good relationships with retailers. And the difficulty you run into is that the site right now is represented by a commercial broker who has 500 other sites. This isn't a focus. So sometimes it becomes low-hanging fruit. So, you know, what's easy, that they can do deals, that's what ends up happening on properties. And so you end up with, you know, fast-food restaurants or, you know, other users that you potentially wouldn't be interested in. But it's so far down the road by the point we're aware of it that we can't do anything to turn that around. So this helps us a lot, and it builds trust with the developer to really want to work with us.
Thank you for the indulgence. I really appreciate it.
No, not a problem. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on either of these items?
No public comment.
Okay. Can we do these together, Frank, or?
Yes.
All right. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve Items F five, which is a consult agreement with Retail Coach LLC for retail market analysis and recruitment services, and also Item F seven, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Expenditure Request and Related Appropriation for the Location Analytics and Associated Demographic Data Collection Services for Placer Labs.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Items approved five zero. All right, moving on to our next item, scheduled matters, no public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
No public hearing.
All right, on to our regular calendar. First item's going to be Item H one. From our Finance Department is the Senior Accountant Job Classification. Mr. Boring?
Good evening. The current agenda tonight is a discussion about the Senior Accountant Job Classification with a recommendation to provide direction to staff. Just some brief background, the senior accountant position is the advanced lead-level classification in the accountant class series. We have the accountant one, which is the entry level, accountant two, which is our journey level, and then the senior, which is the advanced level. And it falls the same classification series for several other of our job descriptions and job classifications within the city. The position was requested with the fiscal year '22 mid-year budget adjustments presented to council on March 15th. And it was requested to meet some of the needs in the Finance Department for critical analytical account work. Some of the examples would be updating our procurement authorization. It was implemented in fiscal year '14, and we've just added to it, but haven't really cleaned up. So there's a lot of junk data in there that at some point we need to clean up. Implementing payroll overtime calculations, we currently manually calculate the overtime rates for all the employees in the city. And our software is able to, if we do some programming, update it, so it would manually do that for us. But we don't have the staffing to do that. Another big item that this position was asked, requested to do is maintain our compliance with GASB statements. We're still working on implementing GASB 87, which is the reporting requirements for leases. And then some of the upcoming GASB statements is the GASB 94, the public-private and public-public partnership. So we'd have to review any agreements we have with other governmental agencies or private agencies for certain operations and update any reporting in our act for at the end of the year. And GASB 96, the subscription-based information requirements. And then some of the upcoming, just like our temperature, GASB has hit triple digits. They recently approved GASB 100 and 101. So those will be upcoming in fiscal year '25. We'll get to change how we report our compensated absences at the end of the year. And finally, it would help meet some of the recommendations from management partners. It's an independent audit firm that was hired to come and do an analysis of the Finance Department. And so at the March 15th council meeting, the senior accountant classification, job specification, and salary schedule was approved with Resolution 2022-19. However, funding was not approved. So during the two-year fiscal year '22 to '24 budget cycle, funding was again requested for the position and presented at the May 5th and June 2nd meetings where the general fund requests were discussed. During the June 7th budget study session, the funding for the position was removed at council's request. And abolishing the senior accountant position was discussed at the June 21st council meeting, which was later tabled because not all of the council members were present. And so staff was asked to bring it back when all members were present to discuss it. And abolishing the senior accountant position, if it goes through, would require some analysis in the Finance Department. We currently have an accountant two that's performing work at the senior accountant level. And in the fiscal analysis, at this time, there's no impact for either maintaining or abolishing the classification. There's no funding for it in the current budget. The only fiscal impact would occur is if the Finance Department was able to reclassify one of our incumbents at an accountant two to the senior accountant position. And the cost for that would be the, the salary difference, which is about 10%. And then I'm here for any questions you have.
So the last part you just mentioned, you said something about should the senior accountant position not be filled? So there's, there's several options. There's keeping it, we created the position. As it stands right now, it's created. We just didn't fund it. And then there was a discussion about removing it. I'm aware of all that. So if it stays unfunded, there's no fiscal impact. So we have a choice to just leave it unfunded. We have a choice to remove it. Or we have a choice to, you said, if we don't do either of those, then we would, we could upgrade someone into that position and say, what would the salary increase be for that?
The, the difference between an accountant two and a senior accountant is 10%.
So dollar-wise?
Roughly $9,000 a year, including salary benefits.
$90,000 difference?
Yeah. That would be the premium of the senior accountant position over an accountant two.
What qualifications would they have to gain?
I believe the qualifications for a senior accountant would be the same as an accountant two. It's the, the job, the job duties that they're performing. So the senior accountant is the advanced lead role, so they're providing more direction to staff. They don't directly supervise staff, but they would oversee and provide direction and take on more complicated tasks.
So it sounds like someone can already do the job, but we're asking for a position so a second person could do the job?
Originally, we, there was a quest for a new position, and that was not approved. So as we have now, we have two accountant-two positions within the Finance Department. One of them is currently vacant that we're recruiting for. And the position that is filled, the person that is filled at, as an accountant two, is performing out of classification, so they're performing the senior accountant-level tasks. But they're at an accountant-two classification.
So there's presently 11 employees in accounting with the possible 12 positions or 13 if this is approved?
Well, if, if, there's no request for additional funding at this time?
I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying, like, until you mentioned that person that you're recruiting for, I thought there was 12 people in the accounting. So apparently, there's 11 and you're recruiting for the 12th.
I believe our, we just recently promoted one of our accounts to the accounting manager. We had a vacancy, so we're not adding any new positions. We have a current vacancy.
Okay. Well, that's all good. For me, for me personally, just so the council knows, as before, I am concerned fiscally. I don't like the idea of not providing you the tools. I don't like going to work with lesser tools myself. You know, just put it that way. At the same time, we are responsible for being prudent, and not all of the budget is finalized. I felt the same way about the Parks and Rec supervisor position that was asked to be added. I personally feel that it's, well, maybe we could just freeze the position for four to six months, freeze everything as-is, and revisit it after all negotiations and all the other financial matters are finalized. That way, it's still there and wouldn't maybe necessarily have to come back to council. At the same time, we can be fiscally responsible.
I just want to add that this isn't another body that's there. So if we were to freeze a position in finance, like if we were to freeze the vacant position that we're recruiting for now, that's one of our existing positions.
Right. Well, maybe I phrased it incorrectly, but the item that is on the agenda is different than the person you're recruiting for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm keeping them separate. I'm talking about freezing this item so that money does not get spent. At the same time, we don't remove this position, so it has to come back on the agenda item to be reinstalled later if money is still available.
Well, I want to clarify, too. There's no budget currently associated with this job description.
Right, right. No, I, I understand what you're saying. There's nothing to be spent. But the position is there. If we remove it...
Well, it's not an approved position, so I couldn't go and recruit for an additional senior accountant tomorrow just because we have a job classification.
I thought it was approved with the resolution that you mentioned.
Yes.
The, the classification was approved. We don't have funding or an additional FTE that we could, we didn't increase our total body count in finance.
No, I know that. I'm just confused.
So it's like, I, I mean, I think they're actually saying the same thing.
Yes.
They're, Mr. Councilman Vandenberg is saying, can we revisit this in four to six months for actually funding the position possibly? And you're saying, it's not funded, I can't recruit. I don't think there's any dispute on that. Okay, correct. I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I didn't realize that.
It's all good. That's what we're here for. So does that, does that make sense to my fellow council members? You know, yes or no?
I, yeah, as I previously, I would be completely opposed to eliminating the position. You know, we approved it for a reason. As far as, you know, when we fund it, I'm certainly happy to continue that discussion and consideration of of funding it at some point. The way I look at it, we've got an administration and a fiscal staff that has greatly improved things. Things like when we go into bargaining, we go in with the correct information, which didn't used to be the case. They're doing a phenomenal job with our efficiency. And, you know, as far as the consultant, I kind of look at them like a doctor. And, you know, I'm more inclined to go to my doctor with a problem and take their advice than to second guess it, you know. So, you know, I lean toward as as soon as we can funding it, because I do believe it's a need and I think it's going to help the the city function better. But, yeah, as it sits right now, we have the position. And at some point in the future, we can fund it, and I'm happy to, for tonight, the guidance to be to leave it that way. We can, we can have that discussion later, four to six months, like you say, or whenever that that comes about.
Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, you know, just like, just like everything, you know, when new item or when items get revisited, it brings up other questions. And I, and I am with Councilmember Vanderburg on taking a look at this at a future time to ensure that the the need is is still there or what we can do differently. However, I will say this, just have a quick question. The accountant ones and twos, are those unrepresented employees?
They are.
They're not part of a bargaining unit?
They're not. The the accountant one, two and senior are all part of the Unrepresentation Management Group.
Okay. And so what I heard in the conversation was that you currently have an accountant two that is performing the duties or some duties of a senior accountant. So they're working out of class. My question is this, what are we doing to compensate that person for working out of class?
At the moment, they're receiving out of class pay.
Okay.
If we were to eliminate the senior accountant position, we would no longer be able to pay the out of class pay. And if the senior accountant position is still there, one of the things we would look at is doing a reclassification study to see if they should be an accountant two or a senior accountant. But that's, I think, the last part I mentioned in the financial impacts, I wouldn't be adding another body. That would just be changing the classification for the one employee.
And adding near nine thousand dollars or thereabouts?
Correct. In the current fiscal year, we probably have salary savings, so it wouldn't be an increase to the budget. And then when we redo with the fiscal year twenty-four and future budgets, if that were still in there, we would build that into our salary projections.
So how how long is this? I'm getting way too far into the weeds, but it is concerning. How long has this person been working out of class?
Well, they served as our interim accounting manager while we were doing their recruitment, so it wasn't as big as an issue at that point. They've currently been receiving just out of class pay for the last three to four weeks that our our new accounting manager has been on board.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
One more, just to follow up on that. So if this person was reclassified, moved into the senior position that we've created, we're transferring the vacancy to that accountant two. Is that correct? And that where that position would sit empty at this point because it would not be funded. Is that correct?
Correct. So currently, we have the two accountant one twos. So if one were reclassified to a senior, then we would have the senior and then a one two. So we would still have a total of two accountants. One would just be at a higher classification.
No, no increase in bodies.
Correct.
So let me get this straight. The increase of ten grand? I don't know. Maybe I'm just tired.
But but that would be an increase of ten grand overall, but no, no more bodies.
Correct.
And we could, we could hold it at that twelve bodies or whatever the count is?
Yeah, unless you wanted to fund an additional position, I'd be more than happy to accept one of those.
No, 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 no. I like what you, I like what you tried, but that's okay. No, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we both win. If the senior accountant position was, if the person moved up to the senior accounting position, but we did not, we eliminated the position, they left.
Let me just little, I want some clarification here. So we have, we have two accountant one twos. What's confusing is call them one twos. Let's just, let's just call them accountants. Okay? They're not senior accountants.
The accountant classification.
Okay. So we have two accountants. One of them is actually doing duties of a senior accountant. And they are currently taking on some of those tasks, and for that, we are paying them out of class, right?
Correct.
If we just decide to go ahead and make them the senior accountant, so they would, just their job title would change, they're still going to receive the same money as they're getting out of class right now?
The out of class, our, in our personnel manual is five percent, so they're kind of in between. They're, they're an accountant two and a half.
So the out of class pay they're getting is an increase of five percent. If we were to just give them, move them into the senior, senior position, vacating the regular accounting position and making them a senior accountant, they will be doing the duties they're doing now, but they'll be basically making ten percent more than they make now, not five percent. Is that right?
Correct.
With more responsibility.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify what we're talking about, so.
So, Mr. Boring, there is, first of all, thank you for give us all the detail. And you know, this agenda item came to the council for three times. In the first time, we did, you know, create two position, with the captain and the senior accountant. And my opinion is, we prioritize. I prioritize. The reason I support the captain position, me, is more important than the safety. And then the second time, that time, we said we will create the position, but we're not going to fund it. And I believe all councilmen, we understand, then after, I think, four week, after six week, then again, come back. Okay, you guys created that position, why you don't fund it? I'm, it it is make me three times the same agenda item we're discussing. And I'm by everybody, the same thing, my priority, their budget, their priority. Right now, we are in the middle of the bargaining unit. That's my first priority. And I'm not talking about this position you don't need it, it's very important, but my opinion have to prioritize. If we leave like whatever I know and move a six month after a year, yes, I might be well support that. But at this time, I'm not going to support. Thank you.
So I get, I get, I like the fact, first, I want to state that I like the fact that Mr. Vanderburg, you know, is basically, you know, has suggested a compromise. I mean, he's willing to compromise. I, I, I think it's good that we, we try to find some middle ground and stuff. But I also just want to state too that, so the ten percent increase in salary, so should we move this accountant position to a senior accountant, the increase in salary that they will get will be a plus of ninety thousand dollars? Is that what you said?
No, nine thousand.
Nine thousand dollars. Okay. Okay. All right. I thought you said ninety. All right. So, so right now, so right now, they're getting, they're getting paid out of class, five percent. To go up to the ten percent will be an additional nine thousand dollars.
No, the nine thousand is over an accountant two, so they're getting, you know, roughly four thousand, forty-five hundred in out of class.
Okay, all right, I see. Well, I just want to remind everybody too that when I say everybody, I mean staff and yourself, you know, that we, we started backfilling, not backfilling, but filling these positions back that we had frozen during our budget cuts, you know. I mean, there was a time where the finance department was down to like six people. If I had the, when you guys provided me a graph of the positions when they were filled over the last eighteen months and when they were empty, we were down to like six people, and now we're back up, you know, basically at full, full pandemic, full pre-budget cut levels. And then, but I know obviously you're saying, well, we have these new things we have to do and these things that the state's requiring us, and so we need this extra manpower. And I get all that. And what Mr. Vanderberg said is like, you know, nobody wants to go into a job without the right tools. I get that. But I just, my only hangup is that, you know, we have, you know, we're getting ready to talk about weed abatement here in a minute, and I've been asking for almost a year to have weeds cut, and it's still not done. Because we don't have staff. We have people that are responsible for doing that kind of thing that make like sixteen dollars an hour, and nobody wants to work those jobs. But all we want to talk about is finance positions and city hall positions when the positions that really impact, you know, I'm not saying that finance positions don't impact the community, but the the visual impact that the people of Galt are asking for, for having certain services done that are not being done after months and months and months of my asking are still not being addressed. And I just, I hate to just sit up here and, you know, fill, fill the, fill the finance department. We fill this, we fill that. You know, public safety is a big quality of life thing. We added some, we had a captain position. We've been very active with getting our police department up to speed. But Parks and Rec seems to be in last place once again. And it's just frustrating. And I just, you know, I just, I don't want, and then, you know, then we passed, you know, putting a tax measure on the ballot for people to decide if they want to fund a Parks and Rec. So again, we're asking for the community to dip into their pockets. But yet, we're just gonna, you know, go add finance position. I don't know. And nine thousand dollars is not a lot of money for that position. I understand that it's probably important. I think for nine thousand, the work, the extra work they're doing, that could be done for nine thousand is probably well spent. But I just, I really am frustrated with the fact that there's been other things that are super important to me that just feel like are just not gotten done. And that's not your fault, Mr. Boring. I get that. I'm just talking out loud. So that's my thoughts at the moment. I don't know how I feel about it. I'd like to hear from everybody else. Anybody else?
Mr. Boring, I will, I will make sure be clear. I know you, you asking a reasonable. But we have a budget. We have to prioritize. I'm not talking about you don't need it. You have a good explanation, but there is a budget. This is taxpayer money. I, I can't, if I don't believe the need to spend, I cannot support it. But there is a position down the road, maybe after six month, we might be think about that. So I, my position is the same three, three month ago when the agenda came.
And I just want to make clear the, the agenda item today is just bringing back at council's request, the the previous conversation. So there's no request for any additional appropriations or anything else. It's just, do you want to keep the classification or abolish a classification?
So you're not asking, you're not actually asking tonight to 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 move this person up in classification? This is just a discussion whether to keep that position, because Mr. Vanderburg requested it be abolished, and that's why we're bringing, and we had a meeting, we were short people, so we're, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, and then.
So my understanding, sorry, could you, so my understanding, Mr. Vanderberg is you're, you're actually fine with keeping the position and not abolishing it now, but you just want to wait to to.
Sorry. That would be a minimum. That would be a minimum. You mean, I don't know that we can actually make a motion to shift positions and that sort of thing because we're just talking about a specific item. But, you know, I, I would, I would consider that a concession on my part to just bring it back after all the other budget items are finalized.
I, I would, I would support keeping it. Now that he's, you know, decided to compromise, I would support keeping it. But in line with what Vice Mayor Sandu was, I, I too would like to not act on it though and do anything with the position until after our other negotiations are finished and we address those other concerns, then I think at that point I would be comfortable with maybe having a discussion about that. So if the, if, if, if the, if the council, if there's a consent, well, I guess we got to make a, a, a motion to do something, but if it's just, let's just leave it alone since we already created it and just revisit it at some point in the future, then I would support that. Does anybody want to make a motion to do anything or further discussion on this?
I just want to clarify that any adjustment or moving that person would be an HR process. So there's a section in the personnel manual that talks about doing evaluations and classification reviews. So if there is an existing position, then it would be an HR process to move them. So it wouldn't be, if we're not adding people to the budget.
So you're saying you guys would just do it? You wouldn't have to come back to us? You guys could just do it whenever you want to?
It wouldn't be adding another position if it's an existing classification that we have?
So right, so what I'm saying is based on what we decide tonight, if we decide tonight to keep the position intact, that you guys have your own discretion, HR has its own discretion to move people around and within that, on their own?
Within a classification. So we couldn't say, you know, you're, you're doing work. We want to make you a deputy finance director now. It's if, if you're an accountant two and you're doing work out above and beyond an accountant two, then we can start a process to move them to a senior accountant.
So basically what I said, if the position's there, you guys can do it. It doesn't come back to us.
Yeah, so if, if we went through a process like that, it would have to be, we would have to have available funding within our budget. So I couldn't just add, you know, nine thousand dollars to my budget to, to make that move.
Okay.
And the out of class pay that we're currently don't lean out, is, is that half of that nine thousand?
Correct.
So what we're talking about is we leave this in place, and if they chose to move the accountant to the senior position, we'd be looking at a whopping forty-five hundred dollar difference to get somebody paid for the work they're actually doing.
That's, that's a great point, but my concern is that the old position, the accountant two position will get backfilled at a hundred thousand dollars. I want to make sure that doesn't happen so that.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, and that was my prior question, that we're just moving our vacancy, our unfunded position to that other place. We would have to approve the money to, to, you know, we're just.
Agreed.
We'd still be keeping a vacant spot and not adding a body, so.
I, I missed part of that, but if through the, the HR process in our personnel manual, if we were to do the classification study and they were determined that they should be the senior accountant, it wouldn't increase a body count. Like, increasing body count would have to come to council. If we needed additional funds, that would have to come to council. So if they were to recommend that they should be a senior accountant, then.
So if you guys upgraded them to a senior account position, vacating the lower accountant position, so you've moved that person up?
Correct.
So now you have a vacant lower account, you have an accountant one two, one slash two position that's empty now. In order to fill that position, that would be, have to be a budget allocation which would have to come to us.
Correct. So we'd still have just the two accountant series people. One of them could just move up to a higher classification, but we couldn't add any more bodies.
Then I would be fine with, I would be fine with that. I would be actually be fine to spend the extra forty-five hundred and move that person up if that's something we have to decide. But I, what I'll be in line with Mr. Vanderberg, I don't want to see any money spent to other, fill out their position.
Correct. There won't be any additional positions added. Any increase to budget or adding additional positions would have to come to council.
Right. And that, that's something that really wasn't discussed because maybe it wasn't an option at the time, but that's why I said if that person is moved, but there's no additional funding added to the department, everybody wins at a very reasonable cost because we're spending half of it already.
Correct.
So I, I would be okay with that if that's the, the final, final.
Can we, can we do that, city attorney?
Yes, good question.
Can the council do what specifically?
Here's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, that we, the direction, so it says, review the senior accountant position, I'm sorry, job classification and provide direction to staff. So what I'm hearing Councilman Vanderburg say is take, keep the senior accountant position, job classification in place. And suggest authorize whatever the HR process for one of the two senior, I'm sorry, one of the two accountant positions to possibly be moved to senior accountant and the authorization of forty-five hundred dollars. And keep the one, if, if that happens, keep the one accountant position vacant.
Yeah, technically speaking, what the council can do tonight is to keep the, and what I'm going to say, I think, is, is consistent with what you just said, but I'm going to just clarify it a little bit and clean it up so we're technically precise. What's on the table for council tonight is to say, hey, do we, do we, do, do we do or do not want to keep this classification? Then staff, under the existing personnel rules, has the ability within a classification series to move people upward or downward. It's just called promotion and demotion, right? I mean, it's something that's inherent within the city, city's powers. But what I'm hearing from staff saying, if council does keep this position, this classification for the senior accountant position on the books, which is the policy decision tonight, their intent would be to move that incumbent up and not, obviously, not replace with additional bodies, but move that person up to get, which was the forty-five hundred dollar delta we talked to. So technically, council's decision tonight is to keep the classification on. So technically council's decision tonight is to keep the classification on the books for the senior accountant and create no new bodies because that would require a whole new funding appropriation anyways. But what staff could do is take the senior accountant two position and promote up to senior, to, sorry, the two to the senior accountant position within the existing personnel rules for that forty-five hundred dollar difference, but not backfill it with any additional bodies. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud. And the important thing for myself and Vice Mayor Sandu is that keeps us more financially prudent. I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too. I just don't want to... We're just, we're just looking for a consensus on guidance. We don't need a motion and...
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, if, really, it's just to consensus on keep the classification, that's pretty much it.
Is that okay with you, Jay? Rich?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, okay. That's an all win situation.
All right. I think that direction's given.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We didn't have no public comment on that?
No public comment.
All right. Moving on to item H2 from the Parks and Recreation Department, weed abatement priority corridors within the city of Galt and the appropriation of thirty-four thousand dollars for annual weed abatement efforts. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today I'm bringing forward to you some information you've already obtained. In a memo to council on July 7th, you were informed that we were going to be proceeding with the weed abatement program and to hire a contractor to spray for weeds. We started this project now and what we're asking for is funding to hire that company and to fill the, pay for the overtime of the employees that are working it. Currently, we've reached out to three contractors. Two are unable to take this job due to staffing. We have not heard back from a third. The areas that we've already knocked down weeds are on Elm Avenue, the Central Interchange on A and C, and Fairway Drive. And the city staff is asking for an appropriation of thirty-four thousand to finish this project and fund it fully.
Is this, so is this the addition? Because I'm just, I'm fuzzy on this because so much time goes by. We allocated emergency funds under the discretion of the city manager, under his authority to do so, thirty-some-odd thousand dollars. Is that the money that we, that's from the July 7th? Is that it?
Yes. We had to come back and ask for an actual appropriation.
So this money you're asking for tonight is in addition to that?
No. This is that funding.
This is the same money?
Yes.
So, and I know you and I had some texts back and forth, so I'm just, just for transparency to the public, we approved this to be done on July 7th. I was super excited that after months and months of me wanting to get the weeds taken care of, we were going to have it happen, but here we are two months later and it hasn't. The reason is because you stated to me was why.
Well, a lot of my staff currently are tired. They've been working to their full potential and it's been hot. A lot of these guys don't want to come in on their days off and work in today, a hundred and fifteen degree temperature on overtime. And honestly, I wouldn't be willing to either or wanting to.
So you're saying these efforts were a lack of, so to clarify, in order to get this task accomplished, you were depending on overtime?
Correct. Incentivize it by overtime pay.
And that's what that thirty-some-odd thousand that we approved was going to be used for?
That plus the hiring a company to come in and spray the weeds after we knocked them down.
You know, Mother Nature has almost taken care of the weeds for us at this point. I don't think there's anything even growing out there.
Almost, but...
I mean, you could almost just blow on the weeds and they would just blow away at this point.
Correct.
Is any of the spray pre-emergent?
We have not specified that yet. We can't even get a quote from one of these companies.
You plan on using pre-emergent?
On the weeds?
Yep.
They're going to come out and evaluate and give us a cost for it. And I don't know what they're going to recommend.
That will come back to us or are you just going to do the best you can?
I will do the best I can with the money. We're expecting it to be in this neighborhood. We got a off the books quote from one of these companies that it would cost this much, but we didn't get anything in writing. We got a budget number from one of these companies.
Okay. So just to be clear, the thirty-four thousand, we already gave you authorization to start doing this, but yet this is just a formality of asking for it officially? I'm confused.
Yeah. I'm just asking for you to authorize finance to put that thirty-four thousand dollars into an account so we can charge against it.
So you think, in your opinion, name off a couple of streets. I didn't have a chance to write them all down, but I know you and I sat down and did some highlighting of the corridors that were important?
Yeah, they're in that staff report.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I saw it, but, all right. So out of the twelve here, you roughly have hit how many you think?
So we've knocked out number five.
Okay.
And on number nine and 10, we did the Central Interchange. So we didn't do the whole street.
You did part of those?
We just did part of that. And that's the Lions part. It was, that was the big part on the interchange. And then we did Fairway Drive, number 12.
Fairway 12. Okay. So only a small percentage, so it's quite a bit left to do. So with this money, I mean, if, my question would be if you've been struggling for the last two months to get people to want to work OT and haven't been able to find a company, what's going to change now? Do you have somebody now that, a company that's willing to come in, you said?
I'm hoping this third company will be, will respond to us.
And if they don't?
Will go out again and look. I mean, things change with companies. Some, you know, they have too much work and then sometimes they don't have enough. We can go back out and...
I mean, weed season's going to be here before you know it all over again.
Yeah. And that might be the...
We almost could just save the thirty thousand and just wait for April at this point.
So is the question here is whether to allocate the thirty-four thousand or not? Correct? That's our only question tonight?
Yes. Well, I want it done. I mean, I haven't changed my stance on it. I want it done. I'm just hoping that something is going to be different than the last two months because...
Well, I think with the weather changing might change our staff's mind on whether they want to be out there or not on their days off. And what some of these guys were doing, they were staying an hour over or two hours over their regular shift and getting the overtime in that way. So I'm hoping that they're willing to do that once it cools down.
Hmm. I don't know. Any other council member have a question for him about this?
Mr. Mayor, I would just maybe ask the staff or ask the council, you know, the corridor number six? If there is possible, because they said it's from start from Costrum to Pringle because the city limit go up to the Lyoke. Because after that Pringle, there is a gas station, then there is a mobile park. And that's important to me and there is some people also ask if even we don't go all the way to the Lyoke, but we need to up to the mobile park.
If you just want the mobile park, we can easily just add to it.
Okay.
That's not that far. It's not that many feet to add to it.
Okay. Thank you. Well, okay. Well, again, like I said, my stance hasn't changed. I want to see it done. I mean, at this point, the vigilante weed mowers out in the community are going to be back at work real soon here if you don't get on this.
So, a motion to approve the resolution?
I second.
All right. Motion to approve the funding for the weed abatement, weed abatement priority corridors within the city of Galt and appropriation of thirty-four thousand for the annual abatement efforts. Moved by Papino, seconded by Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Resolution approved 5-0. All right. Next item, Mr. Solis, is going to be the H3, Parks Landscape Full Time Position.
Just to get it clear before we start this, we are adding a full-time position to this is what we're asking for. So this is going to be the third time that we've brought this position to you. Back during the budget process, we brought this information to you and then as early as July 26th. What we're asking for is a, I'm sorry, we're asking council to add a full-time maintenance worker to the landscape crew. This is a landscape worker, not a supervisor. It's a landscape worker to add to the crew, to carry out the landscape services. And then there will not be any increase to service level. It will remain to two park mowing per month and one streetscape per month and one pruning per year.
We're not increasing the service level, but this is going to help us get the level that we're actually supposed to be at right now.
Our guys are working their tail off and I'm not going to tell you that it's the best work. It's that, you know, fast, cheap or done well. You know, we're doing it fast and cheap right now. I'd like to add done well by adding that extra person.
So, Mr. Solis, did we let, so didn't we recently take some part times and move into full times or we just had a discussion about that? We didn't do that?
We did not. We moved them to, what we did is we took, that was an option one and option two.
Yeah.
This is neither of those. This is just adding that one.
We talked about that, but we didn't actually do any...
You did not do anything with that.
So you have, currently, do you have part-time work? So the mowing crew, does it have part-time people or is there already full-time people on there?
It has, currently it has one lead, which is full-time, and then four part-time people.
So my concern is if you have, say that again, I'm sorry.
You have one full-time lead.
Okay.
And four part-time people.
Okay. So you're, so with this addition of this, you'll have one full-time lead, one full-time and three part-time?
Or part-time.
And four part-time. So those part-time people are not going to be like, hey, why are you hiring a full-time person?
They could easily apply for the job if they chose to.
So if they did and then you promoted them, then you would backfill a half, a part-time position?
Correct.
And what's the hourly wage at this position that we're talking about right now?
It ranges, I believe, ranges between, I think it's like eighteen to twenty-three.
Okay. Do we have any, I was wondering if there's any public comment on this? Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Go ahead, Rich. Sorry.
I just have a quick question just because I'm on the theme of it right now. What bargaining unit is this person with?
GPSU.
Okay.
Well, look, I mean, I want to give you guys all the resources you need. I just want the work done. So again, if this is going to get us there and you feel this is what you need, I'm going to trust that we can make a dent with this. And I do agree that adding another part-time is not going to do it because, you know, as you said, I wish we all totally agree with you is that full-time positions are more enticing for people than the part-times and that's why we're struggling to recruit those. Right? So, so for me, for my council, fellow councilors, I mean, I would support the position. Does anybody have any extra, any different thoughts on that?
Yes. Mr. Solis, if we adding that position, and you something mentioned, is the service level be same or it will be increase the service level?
It will be the same. I'm hoping to, the quality of work will improve, that we'll be able to be more detailed in our work.
So that's mean quality of work is not service level you increasing, right?
Right. The times that we're, we're only, we're still mowing the parks twice a week or twice a month. We're doing the landscaping once a month and the pruning once a year. None of that will change with this addition of this person.
So that's mean you're not changing the schedule while you're doing better quality than what we're doing with the one person, right? That's why I'm going with that, but at least it will increase the quality of work. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, not to belabor this any longer unless there's other discussion. I would like to make a motion to appoint, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong item here. It's been a long day. It has been a long, sorry. I make a motion to adopt a resolution to add additional, the addition of full-time Parks Maintenance Worker one slash two to the Parks and Recreation Department, the appropriation of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars to Parks Maintenance Worker one slash two position and Fund 006, Parks and Recreation 032, and Lighting Landscape District 033, West Side Lighting Landscape 037, Lighting Landscape District number three, corresponding sixty-seven thousand nine hundred appropriation and general fund, transfers out for additional deficits created by Parks Maintenance Worker one slash two position.
Second.
Second, moved by Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. You're welcome. All right. Item H4 was moved to earlier, so now we are on to item I, Communication. Do we have any this evening?
No Communication.
All right. Item J, City Clerk's Report. Subject is the Parks and Recreation Commission Appointment.
So the recommendation is Mayor Farmer appoint a community member to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill a vacant position and remaining term ending December 2022. Mayor Farmer appointed Sherilyn Miller on December 18th, 2018, and she submitted her resignation on June 21st, 2021. City staff advertised the vacancy on the city's website and social media sites. Three applications were received and all three meet the required qualifications. The applications received were from Brian Snow, Erin Saldivar, and Gilbert Valencia.
Can you repeat? So when did, so the resignation was handed out when and then when do we go out to recruit for it?
Resignation was on June 21st, 2021. We do advertise right away. I think a lot of it was COVID. Sometimes we don't get a lot of applications and the first one received was May of this year.
Okay. Because I know Councilman Papino had mentioned that it's been vacant for a year, but I was thinking that that wasn't my doing. I didn't leave it vacant for a year. It was, we didn't...
No, just like a couple of our vacancies right now, we're not getting applications.
Okay. So I had three applicants for this. I had, as she stated, Mr. Valencia, Mr. Snow, and Ms. Salv, Saldivar. And I did speak with each of these people extensively and I actually went back and each talked to a couple of them more than once. And I mean, they're all very, they all had some, something different to bring to the position, whether it be some experience and something. I mean, none of them had like an extensive Parks and Rec background. They just had knowledge of, either passion for, or they had been, you know, involved with Parks and Rec at some level. And so it was, it was a difficult decision and I took some time with it, but I want to thank all three of them for applying. But based on just conversations I had and I feel like the passions with one particular more aligned with my own in this, I would like to appoint Ms. Erin Salvador, Saldivar, sorry, to the position this evening. Do we need a, we don't need a vote or anything on that, right?
It's your appointment, so.
Yep. Ms. Saldivar, are you here this evening? Would you like to say anything?
And to the council, thank you guys. I've been in Galt my entire life. I grew up in Harold and actually was part of the Parks and Rec softball back then. So my daughter finished out in the Parks and Rec program. I think it was probably the season before it dismantled for the softball program. So I've had my kids, I have three kids, well, one's an adult, nineteen, seventeen, and fourteen. And the Parks and Rec Department has been a huge just part of our lives, you know, through everything. through everything. Um, to have this opportunity, Ernie is the one who actually encouraged me to apply for this. I I didn't, I had not heard of it, um, that it was even open for so long. So I thought that was pretty cool that that it's something that I was already passionate about and for him to reach out. I I met Ernie actually through Parks and Rec when our girls played together in middle school. So, um, something that I'm passionate about with the Parks and Rec program is, well, softball is gone now, but that a lot of times in our community, um, AAU and specializing in a sport is so high in demand. And a lot of times that leaves out the other kids who are just wanting to play for fun. So, um, I feel a lot of passion towards reaching out to those kids and keeping that going in our community, um, wherever that might reach to whatever, whatever Parks and Rec reaches to, um, to to try to support that, to reach out still for those kids. I have the extreme athlete, um, and then I have the one who just plays for fun. So I get both. And I think it's important that that's always an option. Um, but also everything that Parks and Rec does. There's been times, I was on the board for the Galt Junior Warriors for about six, seven years, and my husband was coach and I was, um, the head parent liaison, they called it. And there was a lot of times where we were reaching out to Parks and Rec to organize events, um, get fields open, those sort of things. So, um, I'm a little bit familiar with it, but really just looking forward to working with the other commissioner and Sean and, um, I guess providing a voice and, you know, I like to ask questions and be, I'm very transparent and very honest. So I'm looking forward to it.
Well, we appreciate it and thank you for applying. And I look forward to you guys, you helping with that vacancy and getting them back on track.
Yeah.
So thank you, Erin.
Okay.
And thank you Gilbert for applying. It was a hard decision, but, uh, I encourage you to keep, you know, there's also some seats coming up possibly at the end of the year. So there's maybe some other vacancies. We'll see. So, um, thank you for applying, sir. All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to let the public know that we had our first, um, our first class in Galt University last Wednesday, August thirty-first, where we covered the operations of the council, city manager's office, and human resources here at the city. Um, I think the students got a good understanding of sort of the policy uh, powers of the council and and getting that in context with the city manager and seeing how the two entities work together. We've got twenty-five folks signed up for Galt University. We had about twenty-one last Wednesday. Uh, we also had a, I'll call it a rip roaring mock council meeting, um, at the last meeting. Uh, two of our, um, two of our, um, council members are in the audience right now and students in Galt University and both of them did a good job last, uh, last week. I'm sorry, three of our council members are in the audience right now. And so they did a good job, um, last week and we had a good policy discussion and they got a sense of what it's like to sit in your chairs and some of the policy pressures that you're, you're facing, uh, both with the public and and guiding the city. So that was a good thing. So tomorrow night, we have Community Development and Economic Development with Craig Hoffman and Amy Mendez. Um, given our issues with filling positions on the commissions and committees, I will circle around, um, to the commissions and committees. And we touched on those last, at last week's session, but I will sort of take a moment and highlight a commission or committee, one or two every class now, just to let folks know, here's, here's a particular committee, here's the function of that committee. If it's something of interest of you, from you, let us know, please. And so, because I've got twenty-five really engaged and talented folks who are, who care about their town. So, um, I'm hoping I can, um, at least encourage some of them enjoying our commissions and committees. From an economic development standpoint, the COVID-nineteen Small Business Assistance and Recovery Program is now open for its second round of applications. Uh, the application period will close on September twenty-second. By the way, the first round closed on June thirtieth of this year. At the conclusion of this round, the current round, um, staff will evaluate the amount of ARPA funds remaining of the one point three million allocated and, uh, returned to the city council with a status update and recommendations for expending the remaining funds. Economic Development will be meeting tomorrow with the Chamber of Commerce Ambassador's Group for assistance with distributing flyers and additional outreach efforts to those businesses that have not yet applied. So round one of the grant application period again closed on June thirty. We had forty-seven total business grants applications received, thirty-six business grants applications approved and funded for a total of four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. We had eleven applicants who either did not meet the revenue threshold or did not supply any financial documentation. And to date, we've received thirteen applications for round two, um, and currently are, we're in the review process. So that's the Small Business Assistance and Recovery Program. For the COVID-nineteen Nonprofit Grant Program, uh, the application period closed on August fifth with a total of ten applications being received. Um, an internal committee has been assembled consisting of Parks and Rec, Finance, and Economic Development Staff. Uh, the applications are under review, um, and, uh, there's a process and funding is on schedule to be distributed by the end of September. So let me, let me make that clear. Uh, we, the process and funding is scheduled to be, uh, funding is scheduled to be distributed by the end of September. We've gotten some inquiries from some of the nonprofit groups and I'm hoping that word gets to them. Again, staff will report back if, if a significant amount of funds remain of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA allocation. And so that covers the city manager and economic development. And let's, uh, see if we can get Parks and Recreation up here, because, um, we, you just didn't hear enough from them.
Well, he walks up real quick. So basically, we've, we've given out four hundred and thirty out of the one point three. So we got about nine hundred thousand dollars still available to businesses for that. Wow. Okay. Thank you.
You're the mayor and council. I just wanted to remind you of some events that are coming up. So this Sunday, September eleventh, from six AM to three PM, we're going to have a, uh, car, uh, car show and auto swap meet on the market grounds. So they'll, they'll have cars out there and parks. So if you wanted to go out there, I know you're interested in that kind of stuff, Mayor. Um, I wanted to let you know that the pool, our aquatic center, is closed for the season. We've, uh, closed, uh, after Labor Day. We do that every year. So I just want to let you know that we've closed just in time for this heat. Um, I wanted to let you know that we have our movie night this Friday and our concert will be on, uh, Saturday. And then I'd like to thank my staff for working so hard during this heat. I really appreciate them. Uh, our Parks guys, our, our market people, you know, our market staff's usually forgotten, but that asphalt adds about another ten degrees to, to the temperature. So I just want to thank them all for all their hard work. Do you have any questions about the events that are?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Director Solis. Uh, Director Mike Selling, please. With the Public Works Update.
Yeah, thank you, uh, uh, city manager. Uh, I don't really have much in the way, but I also wanted to just express appreciation and thanks to our staff. Uh, they've had some significant issues coming up, unforeseen things as far as water lines breaking and things like that. And then being out in this heat, I know we've had a couple of folks we've had to kind of send home a little early, uh, just because it was getting to them. So, uh, and our facilities team as well, like, like Armando noted, for the market folks, I think our facilities team sometimes gets forgotten in that. So I just want to express appreciation for them for, uh, keeping things, uh, going. And, and we've had some issues here with city hall and stuff. We've got some, uh, some new pumps on the way for the AC systems here. So, uh, and then, uh, we're looking to, uh, have a future CIP project to upgrade the generator here to where, you know, should there be a rolling blackout or something like that, we won't have to make all these contingency plans like we had to tonight, uh, in case there was a blackout. So, uh, I just express appreciation to all the staff out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Selling. And now Captain Rick Small from the Galt PD.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm just going to echo what the other directors have said in regard to, uh, thanking my staff as well for being out there in the heat, um, wearing a full uniform, uh, in hundred plus three weather is never easy, but they're out there working hard still, making sure everybody's safe. Um, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Reed, for showing up tonight and, uh, representing the Public Safety Committee as well. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, comments by city council members and future agenda items. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity. Uh, first of all, thank you for all staff for give us a detail and thorough reports. I thank you for the public comment. Any, any public comment is important for me. It's top of my list. I also like to thank you. The public citizen came to this con, this chamber. Thank you for your time. Uh, I attended a few things. I attended memorial induction of Officer Graywall. It was one year anniversary of his passing. Thank you to the police department for organizing the event and everyone that came in support. I also attended car show at McParland Ranch owned by Galt Area Historical Society. It was well attended with a lot of cars. Thank you to all the business they donated, create rainfall prizes. I also attended the Saturday market with the new early hours because of the heat. It was still pretty well attended. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papano?
Yeah, I'll echo that. Uh, hats off to the police department, the city, and the surrounding agencies. A very appropriate memorial to Officer Graywall. It was well done. Um, and also, of course, compliments to all the staff that's working through the heat and, uh, doing a good job. And, uh, speaking of commissions, I had a resignation from the youth commission by a mentor this weekend. So the city clerk will be posting that and we will hopefully not waste any time on, uh, getting a lot of applications to review and fill that position. So pass the word. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vanderburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for the public comment and it's good to see the reports and the, uh, public participation. Uh, sometimes it feels void. For all the staff, I really appreciate all the hard work. I often work in the sun myself and growing up on a farm, it is brutal on you if you're not careful. So start early, drink plenty of water, please. And, uh, I'm sorry that I could not attend Officer Graywall's memorial. Um, I was in an unfortunate position, uh, but I'm really glad it was well done. And thank you for all those that did attend. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, um, just a couple of things. Uh, again, the Saturday market was very hot this weekend and, and oh my gosh, um, I was there real early and, and left pretty early. So, um, hopefully, uh, the next one will be a little better for the weather. Um, the organics recycling meeting that we had on the eighteenth, I got there late, um, but it appeared to be pretty productive in talking to the citizens after. So hopefully that'll be moving forward with an addition, maybe an additional meeting, public meeting. Um, again, I just want to echo what everyone has said about the, uh, memorial for Officer Graywall. It was, uh, very well done. Uh, thank you to the police department and, and everyone else that attended. And then, um, I had the opportunity to come to the first Galt University, uh, meeting and, uh, couldn't stay the whole time, but, uh, it was pretty well, well attended and, you know, it was nice to see some people in the, the audience that had been at council meetings for a long time there. Uh, and then again, some that are new to come into council meetings. Hopefully this will spark an interest. Um, and I think that is it. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, myself, um, again, just echoing what everybody said about the memorial for Officer Graywall was very well attended and we had a lot of people from other agencies and our fellow CSD, um, men and women and, um, want to appreciate the fire, uh, the, our police department and, uh, whatever staff helped with that, putting that on. So thank you for that. Um, also, um, you know, those of you that are working out there, whether you're city employees or anybody, um, it's brutal out there. And so, um, just everybody be safe. I do want to space, special thanks to our litter abatement worker. He's like my, one of my favorite people in the world right now. And so far, he has accumulated almost a hundred bags of garbage since he's been on the job. So, um, he told me that he's actually seeing less garbage now that he's repeating the same areas over and over and seeing a dramatic difference. So I'm glad to see and hear that. Uh, I want to remind people of a couple of events are going on. Um, Senior Bingo on Monday, the twelfth at one PM for seniors is going to be at the Chabola, Chabola Center. Yeah. So Senior Bingo put on by the Commission on Aging and Parks and Rec, one PM. And, uh, this Sunday, September eleventh, um, if you have a chance to visit the Fourth Street Promenade, um, the Chamber of Commerce has, is going to be displaying, um, flags across the top of the fence by the rubber tracks on the promenade, fifty flags. And they have a, um, a wall with all the names of the victims of nine eleven that are portrayed on a, on, uh, a long banner. It's, and it takes almost the whole fence in one section. It's, it's just breathtaking to see like what three thousand names look like. It's really kind of a, a heavy thing to see. So if you have a chance, it'll be the, it'll go up in the morning and it'll be taken down that night, uh, on this Sunday, September eleventh. So go by there and check it out. And, uh, last, I just want to thank Officer Sheckley and Officer Robinson. And I'm sorry, I apologize to the third officer who was there, but for coming to my aid on a couple of days ago in the hundred and fourteen degree temperature level incident. So I appreciate you guys being so quick. So, uh, with that, I will, um, adjourn the meeting at nine oh one PM. Good night, everybody.